There you go, Steve.
The chair notes the time is six o'clock. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, ZBA Chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We will begin with a roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Dylan Maxfield.
Present.
Ms. Thera Marshall.
Here.
Mr. David Sloviter.
Here.
Mr. Vince O'Connor.
Here.
A quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Ms. Christine Brestrop, Planning Director, and Mr. Rob Wachilla, Planner for the Town. Rob will be the principal staff person for the ZBA going forward. He comes to us after working at the Planning Department in Ware. Welcome, Rob. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
We anticipate that Rob Mora, the Building Commissioner, will join us later. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, in Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority, the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional, to gather additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address for the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of hearing to file a decision. For variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed in the town's clerk, with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Ds to take effect. I also want to note the presence of Rob Mora, Building Commissioner, who just joined us. Tonight's agenda: Public Hearing, ZBA FY 2023-14, the Spoke LLC. Request for special permit under Section 3.352.2 of the zoning bylaw to change the use of a building located at 1 to 11 Prey Street, AKA 15 to 33 Prey Street, Amherst, Massachusetts, 01002, from a three-space commercial building consisting of a bar, general cleaners, and a laundromat to a single-space commercial building consisting of a nightclub in request for the special permit under Section 5.042 of the zoning bylaw for live or prerecorded entertainment. MAP 11C, Parcel 274 BG, General Business Zoning District. That will be followed by the public meeting and discussion of the application. There'll be general comment period from the public on matters not before the board tonight, other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours, and adjournment. So the first order of business is ZBA FY 2023-14, the Spoke LLC. Request for a special permit under Section 3.352.2 of the zoning bylaw to change the use of a building located at 1 to 11 Prey Street, AKA 15 to 33 Prey Street, Amherst, Massachusetts, 01002, from a three-space commercial building consisting of a bar, general cleaners, and laundromat to a single-space commercial building consisting of a nightclub in request for special permit under Section, uh, special permit under Section 5.042 of the zoning bylaw for live or prerecorded entertainment. MAP 11C, Parcel 274 BG, General Business District. Are there any disclosures?
Yes. Vincent O'Connor. I filed this afternoon in the town clerk's office a disclosure that the, the owner of this building is also the owner of the residential units, uh, unit in which I live, Millhallow Apartments. And I don't believe that will have any impact on my ability to hear the matter before us in a fair and impartial way.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. So noted. Um, we held a site visit. There are no other disclosures. We held a site visit on Tuesday afternoon. We entered the building, observed the space, the doorways, windows, observed the planned layout for the space, including the dance floor, the staff room, storage, um, next to the staff room, as well as the bathrooms. We had a discussion about the noise abatement measures proposed by the applicant. We went outside to observe the exterior of the building, surveyed the parking situation, saw the location of the two sheds to be built where the delivery vehicles and trucks would also operate. We observed the property lines where the fences would be located and discussed the raised curb or threshold on Prey Street. Other questions that were asked during a site visit. It was asked what the space in the attic would consist of. It was asked if buildings, if businesses would be open at 8:00 PM or after the anticipated time of opening for the nightclub. Those are the other businesses in that, along Prey Street. Does the abutting bank have an agreement to let the spoke live use their parking spaces? Do the abutting Jones property buildings have Uber ride-share traffic lining out in front? There was mentioned that the town parking lot will be used by, will not be used by, um, spoke employees. The employees of the abutting businesses in Jones property usually park around the, um, around until about 5:00 PM, was the representation of the applicant. Was asked where the handicapped access and parking center. The raised curb was identified as potential tripping hazard or concern, and we asked how the applicant would address this. We wanted to know, it was asked what the cubic feet of air moving through the ventilation system is, and does it meet past COVID, post-COVID standards? We asked what the average height of men and women in the US are and how many students at UMass are over 21. I think there's, that summarizes pretty completely the questions and observations we made. Is there anything that anybody wishes to add? Ms. Marshall.
I would say we talked about the queuing outside also.
Good, yep, good point. Thank you.
And I, I believe I, I believe I asked whether there were, um, any solar, um, activities planned for the building.
Correct. Good. Thank you. Those are good additions. I appreciate it. Um, I want to go through the submissions we have received. First, the submissions from the applicant. We've seen a ZBA FY 2023-14, ZBA application. Management plan with the attached addendum, including additional information required for restaurants. The lease agreement between Jones property and the spoke. The sound analysis conducted by Bill Forbes of SPL Systems with recommended improvements to the building. Been a submission rendering of the signs that will be placed on the north and west elevation of the building. A screenshot of the sheds that we replaced at the rear of the property. An image showing a palette of colors, choices for roof shingles. Combined site, floor, and elevation plans prepared by Fitch Architecture and Community Design. Those include sheets one, 0.1, 0.2, sheet 8.1, 1.1, sheet A 1.2, sheet A 1.2.1, 2.2, 2.0, and 2.0. Planning staff submissions include memos from the design review board, previous decisions pertaining to the applicant, ZBA FY 1984-64, ZBA FY 2001-33, ZBA FY 2008-18, and ZBA FY 2012 Art 14 Decision Document. Those are all for 35 East, 35 and 37 East Pleasant Street. Zoning amendments passed on December 19th, 2022. Updated Section 3.352, updated Section 5, updated Article 11, and updated Article 12. In addition, we have some, um, town, documents sent to the staff that are noted in the record. One, a letter from Scott Livingstone, the Chief of Police. A letter from Carl, from Captain Chris Bascombe of the Fire Department, and a letter from Town Engineer Jason Skeels. I think that is all the information, all the submissions that we have, is it not, Rob? Okay.
There also was some supplemental materials that were sent as well.
Yes, we had, we received something from the University of Massachusetts, which includes a conversation, email, conversation between Planning Director Brestrop. My Apple Watch is talking to me. I'm sorry. Email information, email conversation between Planning Director Christine Brestrop and Nancy Buffon, Associate Vice Chancellor for University Relations regarding the age of UMass students. I think that's it, right? Good. Ms. Marshall.
Sorry, was that last piece, that communication from Ms. Buffoni? Was that sent just to Ms. Brestrop? I don't recall seeing it. Did it?
I think it got, I received an email this afternoon with that information.
Okay.
Double check your, double check your mid-afternoon, Ms. Brestrop.
Okay.
I believe there was one other piece that, um, went to us that we sent out to you, and it had to do with a question that was asked about, um, parking in the downtown. How many spaces there were available and how many spaces were, um, permitted to, um, a few of the different, buildings downtown. So you should have that in your email as well.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you. You did receive that. Okay. If there's no other comments regarding, um, submissions, we'd like to look at, uh, who's representing the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, I'm representing the applicant. I am the applicant, Chad O'Rourke, St. University Drive, Amherst, Massachusetts.
Great. Go ahead and make your presentation, Mr. O'Rourke.
Uh, thank you. So what, we're proposing to, we're looking for a change of use of the building, uh, from, as you had said, from a, for what had been for years, a bar, general cleaners, and laundromat, um, to a change use as a nightclub. Um, we are looking to operate this business, uh, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and, uh, some Sundays during the school year. Uh, it is a business that's favoring the student, the general student population that's there. Uh, as indicated, I currently own the bar located at 33 to 37 East Pleasant Street, which is the spoke. This would be, um, sort of an extension of that premises. Uh, it is a separate physical building, so we are applying for a separate liquor license. Uh, but we would be using the same name. It would be supplementary to our existing, uh, bar at the, at located at East Pleasant Street. Um, and we are doing so, uh, because during the seven years I've owned it, um, I've expanded, twice in that building. I took over the, the existing bar in 2017. Um, it was located in the middle of three businesses in that building. Um, we were, uh, adjacent to us was Amherst Sub and Pizza and Amherst Coffee. Uh, we, uh, in year one, we expanded into the Amherst Sub and Pizza side. During COVID, we expanded over into the Amherst Coffee side, and at that point, we had created a nightclub. Um, half the building right now in the, up there is a tavern side, and the other half is a nightclub. And with the success of that and the, uh, what's been happening in the town of Amherst with our, with our bars and nightclubs and, and, you know, sort of lack thereof, we've made the decision to try to expand yet again and be able to utilize the adjacent building to us to take the concept of what we call spoke live, which is the nightclub, and be able to expand it into that building next door, giving us the ability to separate, um, that, the, the two different styles of, of, uh, of a pub tavern and a nightclub and be able to separate them into the two different buildings. So again, we are, we're seeking approval from the zoning board to, uh, for change of use of that building located at 1 through 11 Prey Street to that.
Great. Can you walk through, that's your purpose. That's, I understand that. Can you walk through the plan changes you want to make to the building? Um, some of the things we talked about on the site visit, including the sound abatement, the layout, et cetera.
Yeah, so the layout of it would be that of a nightclub, like you had indicated. Uh, half the building would be a, a larger open room, um, which would consist of a dance floor in the bar area. And then the other half of the building would have the, the back room, the storage, the, the restrooms. Um, and what we would, what we would be proposing is, everything we're doing, we, we know that the, the major topics of conversation are going to revolve around noise control, crowd management, um, queuing, stuff like that. It's all stuff that we've, um, learned and done for seven years in the existing building that we have. Um, our, everything we're doing, the renovations that we're doing to the building, um, are all done for purposes of sound reduction to meet the requirements of the town of Amherst to, to bring the decimal rating to 70 decibels or lower at the property line. Um, renovations include, so it is a, a brick-faced, cinder-blocked structure of a building. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I, you know, what I think would be helpful, a good description, be helpful if we could have a picture of the, uh, floor plan. Um, Rob, can you share your screen or, and so you can point to this, Chad, then we see exactly what you're talking about. That might be easier and also more informative to the public.
Yep.
Sorry to break up your presentation there, but.
That's perfectly, okay.
Can everybody see the plans? Okay?
Rob, can we, so actually, if you want to, Rob, right now, if you want to stay on that page, because we, we can look at this right now from an external perspective, and then we can go to the next page, and that would give us more of a, an internal perspective. Um, so based on the plan that you see in front of you, um, that, that's the proposed new building. The existing building would be to the bottom right corner of this picture, um, over there. Right there, those, those are our two parking lots right there that are the backside of our building, and then we would have the parking spaces that are in front, uh, of the new building. So there's 33 parking spaces total amongst the, the, uh, the two buildings there. There isn't a down, we're in downtown, so there isn't a parking requirement. We do have the benefit of having parking, which is a huge benefit, and there's also the bus stop that's, uh, right there at the front of where the, the bank building is. For anybody that's familiar, it's the upper right corner is the, is the bank building there. Um, so from, again, from an exterior perspective, the, the things that we're working on, we're proposing to do, uh, behind our building, uh, up top of this picture is the new development that's going on downtown, uh, with the, with the building, uh, the apartments that are there. We share the property line with them. They are going to be putting up their own fence perimeter, uh, to separate the properties, and we would connect to the back of that at the backside of the building. Um, for years, the, the Carriage Shops was there, the, uh, Amherst Pub was there. There were these dark alleyways and these kind of nooks and crannies in that back area. Uh, that's all going away, uh, with the new development that they're doing back there in conjunction, um, with what the Jones Properties has done in their corner of the, Jones owns these two buildings here. It's that, that one there, uh, which is our proposed new building, and the one to the left of it on this picture is the existing Jones building. That, that, that parking area in between the two buildings for years was sort of this black hole area. Um, and so now, uh, with all the development going on and what we're doing, we've, we've, we've cleaned it up and we've taken it back. Uh, it's, it's well lit over there. There's cameras over there. That's the area where we currently have the, um, trash and recycling, and we would continue to have that over there. That's picked up weekly by USA Waste, and, and it's the same company we use at the front building, uh, for services. That would all be fenced in all the way over to the, to, to meet the fence that is the cemetery behind it. Um, what that creates is, um, an area that doesn't give anyone purpose for going back there. Um, we would take control of the backside of our building. Jones is taking control of their building. Like I said, we've well lit it now. We've cleaned it up back there, and it's given us a, a nicer area. The front side of the building has a walkway, uh, 72-inch walkway along it. It is a little bit wider at the bottom left corner there, where you see the curvature of the sidewalk. Um, that just follows the contour of Prey Street. Uh, that's 15 feet wide at its peak. Uh, this, there's an awning at the front of the building as well. Um, so the sidewalk is twice as wide as what it looks like on the diagram here. Um, and it's like I said, it's a 72-inch walkway that runs along the front of the building. It's a private walkway. Um, the public walkway is located directly across Prey Street from the building, though that sidewalks that are there. And then our, and then our sidewalk will, does wrap around the side of the building. So looking at it from this perspective, the right side of the building is the main entrance. And then there's three exit points at the front of the building, which are 72-inch, um, double door, no mui on, um, egresses that would allow for, um, safety, obviously. Um, and then we were, we've proposed, uh, to have two sheds, uh, in the back area and within the fenced-in area. We use those for storage purposes. The one that's on the upper right corner there would just be our dry goods, uh, extra cups and stuff like that that we use on a regular basis. The one that's closer to the dumpster side, um, obviously being a, a tavern, a pub tavern, we have kegs and empties and rags and other things that we need to operate that are, uh, picked up on a weekly basis, uh, for service, for exchange and stuff like that. That's the, what we would use that shed for, um, to keep that in, and that would give access to our distributors and our vendors that we, that we work with to be able to get back there. Um, deliveries would come in from that side. There's a back door, which you'll see on the, uh, the plan, the interior plan next. Um, that allows for delivery drivers to get back there, park their vehicle, one of those two spots on the side of the building or both if they need to, and be able to deliver from, um, right into the backside into the employee area without ever having to go through any public area. And then, trying to think what else. Is there, while we're on, is there any questions at the moment by anybody that? I know you guys aren't, are probably not at that point. Do you want me to go over anything else on the exterior aspect of this while we have this open?
While we have it up, can you just show us where the, the lights are? I see some. I see two in the front of the building, but, and light pole, but just run through the lighting.
Yeah, so the, the awning, that front awning that runs along the sidewalk, there's 12 LED, uh, can lights that are built in underneath that awning. It, it's very well illuminated. All lighting was existing, done by, by the Jones. It's all LED. It's all downward facing. You know, again, I, I've been in this town for 22 years, uh, as a business owner, and in conjunction with Jones Properties, we understand the requirements of downward lighting and, and all these, having those considerations and, and everything we do with the buildings. The, um, all four corners of the building are, um, already illuminated with LED floodlights, downward lighting that illuminates all the corners. The egresses have, um, lights over them as well to, to light up the, the egresses. And again, down that awning, uh, has the can lights built into the, the top side of it that illuminates the entire walkway. And it's, it's, it's very well illuminated. It's very safe, for sure.
Thank you.
Is there any, anything else that you want me to go ahead for the exterior at the moment?
That sounds good. I see no other.
My Chris.
Ms. Brestrop. Yep, Ms. Brestrop.
So I just wanted to know if, if, can, uh, you point out where the handicapped parking space is going to be?
Yeah, so that, where, where his arrow is, yep, see the white arrow that's on that picture? Oh, that's my white arrow. So the black arrow right there that he has, right in front of that arrow, that very last spot, um, where these two sidewalks come together, uh, right there at the front right corner of the building, that is where they come down on slope to be handicap accessible, and that first spot is large enough, um, for a handicap accessible spot. And then we have one on each of the other parking lots. We have handicap accessible spots as well.
Okay. You can proceed, Mr. Yep, go ahead, Chad.
Okay, so if you, if you want to, yep, if, uh, Rob, if you can go down to the next layout here, I would actually even, do we have a, if you go to the next one, is there a better, I mean, I guess that one, yeah, this one might be confusing. Do you guys have a preference of, of which one you'd like to view of the two?
That's better right there.
You like that one?
Yeah, that's, I find that better.
So yeah, so looking at this one, um, again, as you, thank you for zooming in, Rob. So the main entrance of the building would be there on the side. Uh, that would be an entrance-only point, and then the three front 72-inch doors would be an exit-only point. Uh, the way we manage and operate the business, if you leave through those exit-only points, you are not allowed to return in. At that point, you must go back into the front. That gives us complete control and management of, of everybody, uh, coming and going. We do, we run a very tight system. We, we have for years, again, in seven years, we've never had an ABC site, ABCC violation, police violation, anything for underage drinking. We have no tolerance for it. We are very strict about it. All our employees are trained that way. Uh, you are not allowed to work for us, uh, as a doorman unless you are a crowd manager, CPR, and first aid certified. You are not allowed to work for us as a bartender or a barback unless you are tip certified, and we do ask that they get CPR and first aid certified as well. Um, so all our staff are, are professionally trained. Uh, we don't hire just anybody off the street. And like I said, we, we are very strict about how we manage our, our queuing, our lines, our patrons, everybody. We use a scanner system by ID Science, which we have for years. Um, I think it's become the standard in our community for all alcohol service-based places to use. We scan everybody at the, at the front door there. It helps us keep a database of anyone that comes in. If there was an incident, it also helps us to eliminate somebody if there, uh, was an incident in the past. Often, um, us, us bar owners in the community, we do communicate with each other. And so if there's an incident at one venue that, um, with, with a particular patron, and we want to ban them from our venue, we can simply go in with their name, and if they ever tried to get in and scan their ID, it would automatically pop up and indicate that they're not allowed in. So at that main entrance point, the reason we do it that way is because of that, it gives us a tremendous amount of management control of, of the patrons coming into the building. So at this point.
We got a, we got a question here from Ms. Marshall.
Yep.
There's a hand raised.
Oh, thanks. I could. Can you hear me? I'm unmuted, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so I have a question about doors, the main entrance. Perhaps it's, well, it's the only entrance for patrons. Um, and maybe it's just the scale here, but is that wheelchair accessible? It looks pretty narrow.
It's 44 inches. Yeah, it is. I think it's just based on the drawing. If you look at the double doors, those are 72-inch doors. Oh, yeah, I think, I think it's probably the ratio of what you're looking at on the picture. It's obviously hard to see it on scale, but those, that is a 44-inch, uh, entrance door.
Okay, thank you. And then the exit door into the back, I don't know if you want to call it an alley, but behind the bar there. Nope, nope, that one. Yep. Is that also an emergency exit?
There, yeah, those are 36-inch doors. The, that would be, um, that's for, to be honest with you, the reason that's in and the only reason it's going to be left in, it's, it's, it's sort of going to be hidden amongst the backside of the bar, but the reason that's there, again, living and learning and lessons I've had, and I've owned three bars in my life, um, equipment behind the bar can often be very big, and sometimes it's very hard to get things like kegerators and refrigerators and those type of pieces of equipment that we use in the bar business in and out from behind a bar. And so that door has been purposely left there for ability to be able to remove, uh, or swap out equipment. And yes, it would certainly be able to be used under cases of emergency to be, for our staff to be able to go out the backside. Same thing, uh, with the other door you see in the picture there from the playroom. Um, that's, that we, we've designed that, that way from a couple reasons. One, to be able to allow the employees to separate from the general public. So coming and going, um, as you, as you probably can imagine, at sometimes a busier night, as we have staff overlap and come in at different hours, um, it, it's easier for them to come in the back door, be able to put their personal items down safely somewhere, lock up, get ready, dressed, whatever they have to do to go out into the working world out there without having to go through the, the front entrance and, and deal with the general public. So that's why that, that door is back there. Also, that allows our delivery drivers to be able to come in, go straight into the walk-in cooler, which is right there to, to deliver the, um, kegs and, and bottles and any other alcohol-based beverages or anything that gets stored in there. Um, we do have an employee bathroom proposed in this, which is, which is great, again, separating our staff from the general public, allowing them to use the restroom if they need to and get right back to work is an important feature. Um, and so that was, that's something that's built into that back room. And so, did, did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I just, I just was hoping it's not like deadbolted, but still there'll be crash bars to open those doors in an emergency?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, every door, I mean, the main entrance door, of course, is going to be. Yeah, every door, I mean, the main entrance door, of course, is going to be crashed, a crash bar. If there was an emergency, we want to get everybody out any door, the, the closest door possible. So again, outside the realm of an emergency under general functions of the business, we will not allow anybody to, to exit that point. At the main entrance. It would be exit only at those three egress doors. Upon emergency, you would be able to exit from the closest door. In any direction and every one of them will have the push, uh, lock style, um, door. Nothing would be deadbolted. Um, so yes, so from egress perspective, that's exactly how everything would function. Is there, so go, going back to that point, so the main entrance there would take you into the, the main room, the dance floor area. Um, as in, again, this is an open, uh, open dance floor area, no tables and chairs. The, the design of this again is safe, simply safety perspective, uh, as much as it seems as though it might be nice to have tables and chairs in a nightclub. They do become hazardous. They become tripping hazards. They get thrown around, moved around, thrown on the floor. Um, they are, they're, uh, more of a nuisance than a benefit. And so we've designed this, uh, with that floor plan in mind to not be, not have them around and have an open standing area, which is easier to manage. It's safer. Um, and so the bar is a nice, long bar that wraps around the perimeter of the, of the room. Giving access to various points. We would have as many as eight bartenders working there. Um, and then the, you know, talking about the egress doors and, and how we manage and how we've always managed. We have, um, mandatory, we have two doormen at the front entrance. And then we have a doorman staffed at each exit door that are not allowed to move. And so in addition to that, we have, we have, uh, two to three doorman, uh, functioning inside that are allowed to move. And then we have, uh, one to two doorman functioning outside to regulate our line and make sure that we. Are, are controlling our general population outside, you know, obviously being in Amherst, one of the things we learned really quickly is that. We are as responsible for our patrons that are outside of our building as we are, as our patrons that are inside of our building. And so one of the things that we do is we, um, we make sure that we monitor and, and take care of our, our lines and our property. At all times that there's no incidences outside, that everything's under control, that we don't have sound issues, of course. You know, that is one of the major concerns of, of this space and we understand that. So again, you know, with the soundproofing aspect internally, everything we're doing is with that in mind of how we can mitigate the sound. Uh, at, um, from the inside out. And so, um, again, from the management of our doorman. We have somebody that is, that is look, is stationed at each one of those exit egresses. Two people at the front entrance working the, the scanner system and, and checking IDs and making sure all that's done correctly. Our exit, um, our exit door staff are there to help patrons make sure they get out safely. Open the doors, make sure they get out into the public way and, and, and onto their, the way, the direction they want to go. Obviously, um, when leaving this building, the general direction is either going to be heading towards East Pleasant Street or heading towards College Street. Um, and there is a private sidewalk in front of our building, which they could follow all the way down in either direction to the public way on East Pleasant Street. Or to the public way on College Street, or they can cross over to Prey Street, at which point they have public access to, uh, both of those roads as well. Um, so going back to inside and, and managing that aspect of things, uh, before we start really talking about internally. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to blend the exterior stuff with the interior stuff, which would be egress and, and, um, and management of, of the patrons. So again, we, um, at the end of the night, when, when, um, when we're closing and we're asking everybody to leave. We open those doors. Our doormen are, are trained. They currently do it to follow our, our patrons out. Make sure everyone, uh, of the general public is outside of the building and then moving on. We, we've always had it, uh, as policy that we do not allow congregating, uh, in and around our property. Um, our doormen follow everybody out. They ask people to keep moving along and then they always, um, circle the perimeter of the building. To check for things like trash and patrons and people that are around and make sure before they go in and they do their, their, their nightly requirements of closing down. That everything on the outside of the building is buttoned up. Um, and then at that point, they'll go back in and they'll help the, the bartenders and the barbacks. And those staff members inside to, to do the, the duties that they need to do inside. Um, and, and that's something we, that's the way we functioned for seven years, even as the little seventeen-hundred square foot bar with one entrance and one exit. That we were before to what we've become. Um, that's, that's the way we, we've always managed. Um, I used to own a, a, a music bar in Sunderland and, you know, that's, you know, the management of, of patrons and live music. And, and we, we learned all that from, from that business years ago. Um, so returning to, to inside, uh, you've got the layout there of, of the bar and the big room. And like I said, there's two, uh, barbacks. There's, uh, eight bartenders, uh, in the, in a general night there for on each side of that. Um, as you go up and down the bar there, four on each, on each side of the corners. Um, and then on the lower part of the, the floor plan of the building there, that's a sixty-inch egress hallway. That would give public access down to the two bathrooms. The apparel room that's in the, the bottom corner over there is not something that would be open during the, the, uh, general hours of, of the public. We sell a tremendous amount of apparel, t-shirts, hoodies, hats, um, anything that we can put our logo on. We try to, um, and so they, I'm, I'm sure that you've seen them around town and, and, and other places. And so that would be an apparel room where we would store things and, um, and allow us some, some space over there because we need it. And it, it's sort of, uh, was done on purpose because we kind of had this dead area of the hallway. And the last thing we want is a dead area where anybody can hide and hang out. So we created that room for storage for the purposes of, of trying to utilize that space without making it an area for anyone to congregate. Um, and then the nice part is again, with an exit only there, the door being located across from both bathroom entrances. That doorman has the, uh, ability to regulate a, a line for bathrooms or people leaving. You know, often people on their way out will visit the restroom first and then head out. Um, so we do expect that, that, that part of the, uh. Exits are, are used often right there. Um, and so that person would, you simply be, have to monitor that door and be able to monitor the bathroom. So it's nice because we do have a staff member that will always be able to monitor those bathrooms. Um, and then again, looking at the bathrooms are what they are, the, there's eleven, um. Stalls in the women's room, two handicap accessible stalls in that, that one. Um, and then the men's room would have nine urinals and two full handicap accessible stalls as well. Um, and then.
So Mister O'Rourke, will, can you do me a favor? Just identify, I, I only count nine, nine stalls in the women's room. Um, and I noticed that it says, and I noticed it says you need ten. So I, I'm assuming you'll, you'll comply with whatever the state requirements are, but I only come up with mine.
Yeah, we would, um, we, of course, and you know, going back to the requirements of, of what we would have to do for inspection services. Obviously, anything we do in there is going to go through the permitting process and, and we're going to have regulations through, um, through Rob Moore's, uh. His whole office, we're going to have, we were going to deal with Chris and, and Jeff over at Fire and deal, you know, where that building's going to be fully sprinkled. Uh, as required. So all those, all those requirements of permitting process will, will obviously, um, be done. I, you could be right with the nine bathrooms on there, I thought.
Yup, I just, I keep counting and I keep counting nine, but, um, you know.
I feel like we have a.
You know, I'm.
Floor plan on that one, on, on it, um, but yeah, that, but.
That might be.
Great layout. It's, it's a handicap accessible stall.
Yeah.
Walk in and then it would be, um, I guess on this would be seven or six. Six, yeah, you're getting seven stalls of, of regular size and then one fully handicap accessible, one at the, at the very top there. Um, and then the men's side, it would be, uh, you know, just kind of the flip to that. You would have the, the urinals as you walk in. And then two fully handicap accessible stalls at the end.
Got it. We, we can talk to Rob later on about the, yeah, making sure that that's comports with state and local law. Okay?
Sure. And that's part of the, um, again, when we go through the plumbing inspection, um, and I, and I work with the plumbing inspector. That's, that's something that'll be, um, you know, checked on by him. And then of course, uh, for final inspection purposes. David Cody or David Westgavitz or whoever I work with in that. Um, and then back in the, um, employee side of things. So the employee back room is designed for, um, as much storage as possible. Uh, you know, what, we've got shelving that runs along. If you look at the, the layout of the, what's, what's called the employee back room there, right in the middle. Um, that has, uh, uh, running along the sidewalls, uh, all the way down and, and around are all storage areas, dry goods. Um, liquor shelving, storage, all that kind of stuff. Um, as much shelving needs, as much shelving as we can put in. Because the one thing we always find is there's just simply not enough. Um, so we will, we will utilize those walls for, for storage. Um, we have the entrance point there of the walking courts of twenty by ten walking courts, very large. Again, um, you know, one of those things where we're trying to utilize the space that's there to create as much usable space as possible. Two large ice machines, um, a utility sink, uh, and employee bathroom at the end. And then to the right of that employee bathroom in the picture is our, is where our water tanks would be. Um, that little storage area that you see that's, uh, straight ahead there by the back door. The water main comes in right there. So, um, and it's exposed and the best way to, um, safely tuck it away. From anybody being unhitted or doing some, is making a closet there. And again, um, for us, it's just general storage. We can never have too much of it. So that's a, that's sort of a generic storage closet there with the water main tucked into it. Um. And then there's an electric panel back there to the right of that rear regress door. We have two electric services that come into the building. Uh, the first is that one right there in that employee back room to the right of that door. And then the other door, which we were talking about earlier on, there's an electric panel, um, just to the side of it in there as well. Um, that's in the bar, the main nightclub side, yup, right there. And that'll be built into the, the backside of the bar. It'll be, it'll be hidden. Um, but there, like I said, there is two electrical services that come in. There's one gas service that comes in. That's on the very back side, left side of the building. Um, it comes in and it goes right up into the attic and its services are, are furnaces that are up there. Um, it's the only thing that's serviced by gas. Um, from a utility perspective. Uh, there's three gas furnaces. Go ahead.
I just, I noticed Miss Marshall has a, her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, maybe before we get up into the attic. Um, I, I assume that as patrons are entering, their IDs are getting checked. That someone is counting how many.
Yup.
Folks have entered. Does that mean all these doormen at the exits are also counting how many are departing? So that you have a up-to-date capacity, I mean.
They all communicate, they all communicate with each other. Yes, sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that was my question, so.
Yeah, they all communicate with each other, um, for, for exactly that purposes, uh, so that we know how many people, uh, exit. Then they communicate with the, the front doorman that allows us to know how many people we can let in at that point. Um, one of the things we're actually working on this year, which we, we hope to get in place is a software that'll allow us to do that, uh, through an application. Um, it's crazy to think that in this world of everything app, um, um, my wife's in the back saying that we're, we're using one. Uh, but we're trying to develop our own because it is kind of crazy in this, this day and age, uh, with this business. That there's not just a go-to application that allows that function. And it's something that we've lived and learned through many years. And again, we've owned three bars and, um, as we've expanded through this. And it's something we've talked about, working on and, and developing is, is exactly that, a software that would allow for very easy communication amongst everybody. Not only the doorman, but that would allow our bartenders to know it as well. And it's something that could be integrated into our systems. We use all of our, um, all of our registers are, are through Square and all of those are Apple iPad based. So they all communicate with each other. Um, and that's something that we had, we had talked about integrating into there. Because we can do that with our scanner system as well. Our scanner runs on a, on a tablet system as well. So. Um, and then even beyond that, you know, talking about technology, everything's on our phone these days. So I, we, we sell, we can manage our, this entire business, our thermostats, our alarm systems, our registers. Down to the minute of, of people, of what's being run through with a credit card, all under one application on our phone. Um, so it, it makes it a really nice tool from a management perspective. Um, so, so yes, we, we do that. And we're actually trying to do that even better. We're, we're, we're.
So you can get it. I think the question was, can you get a net number of people in your place? And the fact is you can do it by communicating the exits and entrances.
Yup, and we already, we already do that. Um, they, so.
Mister O'Connor has a question as well, too.
Yup.
Mister O'Connor has a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to know what, um, the length of the hallway. Between the, the end of the bar and the, and the. The entrance on, I guess, on the, the layout that's shown here, the left-hand exit. Um, to the, to, to the beginning of the left-hand exit. From the, the bar, from the bar area or from the previous, um, exit. That's a five-foot hallway.
Yup.
And I wonder what, what the, what you believe the, the length of that hallway. Um, is.
So I don't have the exact answer for you on here, but.
Okay, that's good. You can submit it later.
Yeah, we can, and we can try to formulate that a little bit right now to answer your question. So the, the building's a hundred feet long. Um, that room is, is exactly sixty-two feet wide. Um, so from that brick bill. Uh, Mister O'Connor, when you were in there the other day, you, 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 you know, you noticed the, the concrete wall that re, that still resides in the middle of that building? The one that goes through the ceiling. So, and it's not quite the center. Um, they must have been. Right, a firewall or something that they did.
I've, I've scaled it out. Yeah, I've scaled it out and it, it seems to me to be about forty, forty feet plus or minus. But I, um, for purposes of evaluating the project, if you have a, an exact number, that would be helpful.
I can certainly get that for you. So from that wall, that brick wall to the, to, towards the room that you're looking at, that's forty-two feet there. Um, and that apparel, that apparel room's roughly about ten. So, you know, again, in, in, in trying to. Guess me here, we're about thirty-two feet from that brick wall to the left edge of that door. Uh, the door's seventy-two inches. So, um, you know, you, you're talking about maybe twenty-eight feet. If, if that's what you're looking for, the first part of that door. If that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, um. So from the, the edge of the, the floor to ceiling wall. Um, you can see it's just a little bit ahead of the five-foot measurement of the width. And, um, and, uh, to the, as you said, the left edge of the, the exit. That's opposite the bathrooms.
Yup, well, thirty, yeah, thirty-two feet. I would say thirty-two feet there.
Okay.
And another question, I know you have Mister O'Connor that, um, you asked the other day and I, I did get the answer for you as we were talking about heading in. You know, I was talking about utilities and we're talking about heading into the, the attic upstairs, um, the fresh air exchange. And so there's three, there's three, um, current furnaces, uh, air handlers in, in the, in the building. And so those will have, um, twelve to fourteen inch ducts. They, they have to determine the size. It's a minimum of twelve inches up to fourteen inches. That'll allow for an eight-hundred CFM, um, air exchange. There's one per unit. And that would allow for six air exchanges per hour. That's more than the requirement. We would be required four per hour per the guidelines that you were asking me about. Those units will allow for six because each of them will do two, um, for those. So again, they're eight-hundred CFM intake, intake ducts on those.
And if you have comparisons with other, with the university. Um, uh, facilities that have, uh, similar, uh, situations. Maybe with the, um, the, uh, exercise facility at the mall. Um, without naming it, I think we all know what it is and so forth. So we have a, a comparison. Because it's always, it's important to meet the minimum requirement. But the question is, um, what, how does this facility compare? Uh, with other public uses, um, at the university, at Amherst College. Uh, the, the exercise place at the mall. So we have some sense of where your facility fits in the. And, uh, and not just with relate to the code.
Yup.
Okay, if you could, if you could get, provide us with that information, it will, it will help us put your proposal in context. With regard to.
No problem, yeah. And like I said, the, the, the minimum and four air exchanges per hour. Where, what the units we have in there would allow for six. And, um, again, for, um, your perspective of, of understanding the layout, the main room there, the larger room. Has two units in it that function for that room itself. And then the back area would, has, has one single one. Obviously, the design of that is we don't need as much in the back area as we, we would in the front area. So, so to service that front area, one, one services that back, if that helps too.
And what, and, uh, in terms of the bathrooms, how is that? How are those? Do you have air exchanges for both bathrooms?
Yeah, they're vented out through it. So, um, each, above each stall goes to, uh, a, a vent system. That is ducted outside the eve of the backside of the building and on both the men's and the women's bathroom. And there, it's tied together to its own, its own duct system. And then you also had a question about, um, the, the attic space again, when we're talking about up there. So I think one of the questions we, our phone call got dropped yesterday during, during the conversation. I think one of the questions we our phone call got dropped yesterday during during the conversations of some of this stuff. So forgive me on that one. But in the attic space, the the building will be sprinkled. Obviously, we're required to to sprinkle the building. General area would be drop ceiling. You had asked that question and above the drop ceiling, obviously, with the the requirements through the fire Amherst Fire Department. Well, we use FireTech who does who's did our front building and they'll do this building as well. And and they already have it all mapped out of the drawing for the the fire suppression system. And so that would be, that would, of course, have sprinkler above and below the the drop ceiling that's in there. If that helps answer your question that you had yesterday about the concerns, the safety concerns of above the drop ceiling.
Right, but so is it your understanding that the entire attic, the hundred foot width of the attic would be open from one end to the other?
Correct. Yep. Yep, with the exception of that firewall that's there, there is a breakthrough on that firewall. I don't know if you were able to see it when you were there for the site visit yesterday. Directly in the middle of that, the existing firewall that goes all the way up through, there's a breakthrough at that point. And so that firewall does carry all the way, all the way through the ceiling.
So there'll be a firewall between the bar and the customer area. And then one, and then on the on the other side of the firewall will be the employee back area, the storage area and the bathrooms.
Yep, exactly. That's in place. We're not going to remove that that cinder wall that go that's there will remain. It 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 goes all like I said, it goes all the way up through and above the the roof line on the outside of that. That will remain. We're not going to take that out. So continuing, I'm trying to think of the other questions that we wanted to specifically address on the inside. I mean, that's the that's the I I I think I've touched on everything on the inside. Is there, does anybody else have questions?
The only thing that I think we we'd want to go through is the sound abatement. And and how that I mean, you talked about it a little bit, but
Yeah.
You had an engineer come in, you're going to put an additional four inches of foam on all the walls. You're going to reinforce the doors, you're going to reinforce the windows. You're, what about sound up through the roof? I forget what's what you're doing on that.
Yeah.
Through the ceiling.
Ms. Marshall had a question before I is there anything, was there something else then?
Or I'll just, if you could address these at some point. I saw raised in some of the documents, we have a concern about I guess essentially maybe needing a booster for emergency radio. After app, if if the insulation is so good, I guess that firefighters inside can't communicate with firefighters outside. So I'm sorry?
I actually just learned about that today. Yep.
Okay, so perhaps there's no resolution of that yet, or you're just, you will have to do it if there's a
Exactly. That that is something that would have to be reactionary. So with 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 Chris Bascom and and the Amherst Fire Department, from what I understood, what I learned today is that when the when the building is finalized, when we're going through our final inspection points with them, that they come in and they would do a radio test for that reason. And if there is electromagnetic interference or anything that would take away that their their radio signals, the option is there is a, I I guess there's a booster type of system that can be installed in the building that would allow for their radios to communicate in there. I I'm new to that. That's new to me as well. And again, I just learned about it today. And it, but it is something that has a solution to the problem. And that is something that when, again, when we go through the final inspection, we would discover at that time and then have to resolve at that time to
The other, the other question was that there was, I assume in the fire department's report that if you have any combustion sources, you will need hardwired CO monitors. And you mentioned there is gas. So you will be installing
Yep. Exactly. That gets built into the monitoring system. So we pay for a monthly monitoring system. We're required to. So amongst the the sprinkler system, we use Target Alarm. They are a a a monthly monitoring system that regulates specifically to the fire suppression system. We have beacon protection for us for our personal safety monitoring system. In addition to that, Target Alarm does the the fire suppression system monitoring. So that's all tied into that, correct. And and so the lines are generally in the in the sprinkler system of of things. You're going to have your normal sprinkler heads that you know of. You're going to have things like strobes in the bathrooms and the in the hallways and stuff. You're going to have your CO monitor, like you were just asking about, an alarm, a smoke alarm system monitor as well. Whole stations at each egress. So all those things are built into in design into the system that FireTech does for us.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Connor.
With questions on looking back at my notes. Will there, one question about the the main entrance. Will you have metal detectors there?
We use them. Yeah, we have, we have a wand system that we use right now. It's by God, I can't think of the name of the company. It's the it's the major one. It's the company you see on all the metal detectors and the wands. We do use them currently at at the at the existing bar and for safety measures. It it helps us. And believe it or not, it's actually done a great job of finding nips that people try to sneak into our place. It's it's amazing what those things will pick up on.
That increases your sales. It's a profit margin.
Believe it or not, the the biggest thing that it does for us, I don't know why people insist on flushing them when we provide trash cans in the stalls for them to throw them in. But often when we have plumbing problems and we use, we we use Fletcher out of out of Agwam. I have an account with them for any emergency needs that we have. Whenever we've discovered that we've had a a emergency need of plumbing, it happens to always be a nip. And so it's done a world of wonders using those metal detectors to eliminate things like flasks and nips and those problems that we that you might assume, you know, incur in in this business. So yes, we do use them, Mr. O'Connor.
And and with regard to the, at the beginning, you said that the this would be basically an operation that would be a school year related.
Yep.
And and then the other thing is with regard to the bill, to the work that's being on done in the building, just i- if if you have from your perspective, how far into the future are you looking with regard to what you're doing with this building in this iteration? Yeah, what what is your timeframe for for the work you're doing, you're proposing to do on this building?
Yeah. So as you saw when you walked through it, we it's pretty much just about gutted at this point. We're we're getting to the point where and and we we have the the permit for that, for the for the for removing the stuff. The building, I I don't know how old it is. I think it's between fifty and seventy years old. So as you might imagine, upon the permitting process of whatever we want to do when it comes to electrical and plumbing, everything has to be replaced in that building.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, that was
But how far in the future do you see this particular iteration of work and activity? How how far in the future do you is this a a ten year project, a twenty year project?
That what we do will last, is that what you asked?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I have a twenty year lease with Jones. And so we're, you know, we're hoping to be here a long time.
Okay, that that's that's sort of that's useful information. Thank you.
And so is it before I, before I go on to Mr. Judge's questions regarding noise reduction and stuff, is there, was there anything else that you guys wanted me to touch on? Because that that's a big, that's a big subject, which I'm going to go over all that with. Is there any other, the little stuff that you guys had questions on?
Let's move to the, let's move to the
Sound mitigation. Obviously, you know, from from the very beginning, from the very design of this, everything that we're doing has sound mitigation in mind. And and we had to, we knew that was going to be one of the main subjects that would that would come up in this. And so the the structure of the building is cinder block, blown in insulation, cinder block foundation. And that is faced by four inch brick. That alone is considered soundproof. But to be on that, for purposes and and at at the site plan, we touched on this a little bit and you guys had walked through and 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 seen it. For purposes of the fact that this building is on slab and we need to get utilities, electrical, other things around the building, we're going to frame out a four inch wall on the inside, the perimeter of the building, all around on on the inside. And that would allow us to bring things like electrical through it, water through it, anything that we need in various areas. Well, that also adds to the the noise reduction of the walls themselves. So the walls, the insulation that goes in the attic, the roof itself, the the drop ceiling, all that is already considered soundproof. So now we have to look at the points of penetration of things like windows and doors. And so the windows that are in there right now are are plate glass. They are noise reducing, but they are certainly not anywhere near what we would need. So I've been working with Amherst Glass and and spoke to them about what their professional recommendations would be. And we, everything boiled down to half inch tempered glass, which would in itself almost probably bring us down to the point of the noise reduction requirements that we need. We work with Mr. Mr. Tint, who would tint the front of those windows that that also adds a a decibel reduction. Those two things together will bring us down at the point of the windows to reduce our decibels requirements to to meet the the requirements of the town of Amherst. We also have another ability, if we needed to do, go beyond that, we can add a Plexiglas internal trim over the the inside of the window. That that right there would definitely get us down at the point of the windows. At the doors, you know,
Can I just, I I I hate to interrupt you and I but I just, no, no, I just want to make sure that I understand. I I I read this, I thought that you were having, that you had proposed to have the the Plexiglas centerpiece between the two panes of glass. Are you saying that that's still something you're considering and you're not planning to do that unless you need to?
Correct.
Just clear that up for me.
Yeah, we were never planning to do that. We would prefer not to. But of course, if we have to, based on the noise requirements that we'll have to meet to in order to open this, we we would do that. And I think, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me at the moment, but I think that would have added, let me see, I may have it right here. I think those, yeah, the Plexiglas adds another sixteen decibel reduction. So it's pretty significant between the
Yeah.
Between the existing plate gla- the the laminated glass panels are fifty decibel reductions, the 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 tint, the absorption of the of of the of the vibrations that the tint reduces another ten decibels. So just the the windows and the tint alone is a sixty decibel reduction in sound. So that would allow us to to meet the requirements at the points of the of the windows. And then, you know, looking at the doors there, I know one of the questions that had gotten asked by Design Review Board was, you know, would we or would we consider doors with with windows in them or or why aren't we? And the simple answer to that is, is that any any point of contact, any penetration through something like a window or door, areas where noise can get through. And so to 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 keep noise reduction in mind, those solid core double doors that would be put in are soundproof doors. So that right there allows us to to meet those requirements of 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 noise reduction so that we can, you know, at the point of the property line, which is pretty close to this building, that we can meet the requirements of the seventy decibels or less for the town. So did that, Mr. Judge, did that answer?
It answered, I'm 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 not sure that I wouldn't want to require the 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 polyvinyl butal laminate, but I understand what you're saying.
That's already, that's already part of it. That is part of the laminated glass. The PV, the PVB that you're referring to is
Yep, yep.
That is part of, that is what makes the laminated glass.
Is in addition, the tint is in addition to all that.
The tint in the window will will, the the laminated glass PV, PVB windows in the tint are what I want to put in. The Plexiglas would be the additional if we needed to reduce it even more.
Okay, so that's, that's not the, not the PVB. That's just, that's already in the glass. Got it.
Correct. Yeah, the PVB is already part of that two piece laminated glass. That that's what makes up that half inch window panel that would go in.
And lastly, this is a really elementary question. But I think noise is incorrect, is a very important issue here. So all these are termed and all these measures that you're taking are are referenced in terms of a reduction from some, but I don't know from what point. So this, it says it's a sixty decibel reduction. It's a eighteen decibel reduction. What is it a decibel? What is the starting point? What are you reducing from?
A hundred decibels, a hundred decibels would be your, considered to be your normal bar nightclub volume at starting volume. And then at that point
For live music or for recorded music?
Yes, for recorded music. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. We're not looking to do, you know, we say, I know live music's a relative term. We're not looking to do live music, you know, with, I think when the, when you hear the perception of live music, you think of a five piece band perhaps in there. That's not the type of live music we're looking to do. It's it's simple jukebox DJ, that type of stuff, single person live, you know, music in there. It's not, it's not a a five piece band or anything along those lines of that's not our intention. And so you know, the the noise reduction there, again, if you look at the, if you take the hundred decibel rating mark and you reduced it fifty to sixty decibels, which is, you know, what the windows and doors would do, that right there would hopefully get us down to the forty. So it does look like we're, we're not really close to being questionable. But again, we we are trying to make sure that we have solutions to problems like if at the point of the windows, it wasn't that we have a solution to resolve that issue, which would be the Plexiglas trim on the inside of it. That would give us So, yeah, and again, we
Thank you.
Yep, and and you know, the main, the main feature for us is that the the structure of that building being cinder block and brick is is a significant amount of 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 noise proofing around the building. I mean, the whole the 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 left side of the building, the entire backside of the building, there's no penetration of windows at at that point at all back there. So, you know, you have a significant amount of noise reduction. You have your your soundproof out the backside of the building.
So your goal for total sound reduction or your goal for total total sound production outside the building at the property line is sixty decibels? Is that what your goal is?
Yeah, so
At the property line or is it fifty?
Well, seventy is the requirement by the town of Amherst, so tried to achieve. And and sixty is very realistic of what I think that we can achieve at that point.
Okay. Mr. Maxio.
Yeah, just for, I guess, point of reference, what is, what's the noise reduction currently at the spoke that's there? What do you guys get for noise reduction from from those windows?
I I don't know. We haven't done an analysis on that building there. Those are tempered glass windows as well. So if you take the standard tempered glass window that that you would have in place, and many of those have been replaced. Amherst Glass just replaced two of them for us with that. Those those tempered glass windows have a fifty decibel reduction standard and and a half inch piece of glass on those as well. The night, the the live side currently in the the building there at the front, we do have half of it as the pub side, half it as the live side. The live side building, the the wall that faces Garcia's, that has no window penetration in it. So that is completely soundproof. And then we do have that noise reducing tent. That's that's how we, that's how I learned about that from Mr. Ten is that we used it on on that side over there on the front of the windows that are, that are on that current nightclub side. I I haven't done a sound analysis over there to in to be able to answer your question honestly. But again, if you take the basics of what we learned from this one, I would say we're probably getting at least a sixty decibel reduction at that point over there alone.
Thank you.
Um, is there, so again, going back to the the noise questions and concerns, especially, you know, on the interior part, is there? Did I, did I answer, Mr. Judge, what?
Yeah, you answered my question. I might have another one, but Ms. Marshall has her hands up.
Well, my my remaining questions, I think, have to do with the noise. Has to do with all the people outside. I think I'm reassured that the sound created inside the building will not cause a problem outside the building. But I do have some questions about management of the people outside and the noise that they make.
Ms. Marshall, let me just ask a question on the interior sound and then we can get to your question. So we keep on the same topic and we don't bounce around too much. You may have answered this, Mr. O'Rourke, but I was looking through, trying to look through the the sound analysis when you did. How do you mitigate the sound in the ceiling? Do that, go over that for me again.
Yeah, so the sound in the ceiling Yeah, so the sound in the ceiling is mitigated by the design of what's up there. So you have the drop ceiling, which drop ceiling tiles themselves have noise reducing properties to them. And then you have the the insulation in the attic, and then you have the the structure of the attic itself. So that, that, like the physical exterior structure of the building, the the along the roof line as well as all considered soundproof, because there is no penetration through that roof like doors and windows.
So you've got foam on the roof, on the underside of the roof, right?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
And then, and lastly, the sound that would escape from the, from the ceiling and the roof, would that be picked, I'm, I'm a novice at this, would that be picked up by sound monitoring? Because I'm thinking of the units right behind your building, the apartment buildings there. Will there be, with the sound that does escape, will that be able to be picked up by the sound monitoring that may be required of you as a condition of the application?
I mean, I I honestly don't know, I think in most sound the sound is always done from the
Street level.
Vertically, not horizontally, yeah, so I
Yeah.
I can't answer that question honestly for you.
Okay, all right, that's fair, but it's, it's something I'm interested in, so.
Yeah.
I'm putting it out there, all right.
It really makes sense, yeah, and I think, you know, a lot of this topic, as as all of downtown Amherst gets redeveloped, I think this will be a topic of discussion for for many businesses, for sure.
Yeah. Ms. Marshall, go ahead with your question, I guess.
Okay.
You asked your question, I guess we can proceed with that.
Well, well, I want to get specific about it, because there there are two things about this project that are are interesting to me, particularly interesting, that is, you have a new apartment building going up, right, right there. So even your current operation, you know, the nearest residents are quite a bit further away than they will be starting this fall. So I'm wondering, and now you will have two queues, a queue at each of your buildings with the road in between. Do you have a plan to prevent, just like a street party starting to develop as people see their friends?
Yeah.
You know, in the other lines or they're coming back and forth and just generally the noise of all those people and, yeah, and disturbing the residents, yeah.
Yes, I do, and we, and you know, again, we we do our best to monitor that. We, part of our employment is working the exterior of the building as a, as a doorman. I learned very early on in our COVID days when we were having to have a line out there separated six feet apart. We needed to monitor that. I also learned very quickly that we were responsible for everything that was happening out there. So at the time of of COVID, as you can imagine, when we had a significant reduction in capacity and we at some point had the same amount of patrons that wanted to come in and we couldn't put them in there. That's when the the lines thing started to really, to start for us and and we had to put spacing outside on the, on the walkway, we had stickers that were done by Amherst Copy in circles of six feet. And so at that point, we started having part of our doormen's jobs of of being outside and monitoring the line and for purposes of separation, everything else. And what we learned from that is that, you know, from a management perspective, it gave us great control of everything as well. And so, like I had addressed earlier, at the end of the night, when when we are closing down and we are removing our patrons from our our bar, we, we don't just open the doors and kick them out and turn around and go in. Our entire staff and, you know, I think Amherst Copy, Amherst Police would would speak on our behalf for this. They, you know, they've witnessed it, they've been a part of it, we've never had an incident at our venue. It is just that, we, we, our, our staff, you know, so I I'm going to go, I'm going to go back to answering your question of of during operating hours, how we do that. But again, the major part of that would be at the end of the night, of course, when when the larger crowds are shuffled out the door and on. And and my staff is is trained to to follow them out and encourage them to move on and 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 go on their way down the street. And it's, it's worked, it's always worked. And and so, you know, during the hours of operation, when there is a line or when there is patrons outside, we, we have staff members whose sole job is to to monitor that outside and and regulate them. And we do the best we can. We have an excellent relationship with with the Amherst Police Department. Often, the officers will stop down at the beginning of the night, check in with us, hey, if you guys need anything, let us know, you know. And then, and again, Amherst, as you know, Amherst is a very small community, it's a very small main road. They're never far away. I can tell you that when we've had incidences where we had had, had to call the the Amherst Police Department, it's almost instantly that they're there. So, and then the other reality we face in this community, and it's a great truth, is that these students that go to UMass, there's only so many options and places for them to go. And the the last thing they want to do is get in trouble and get banned from one bar or not, or all the bars. And as I had, I told you before, we all communicate with each other. There's only half a dozen bars left in this town and we all know each other, we all communicate with each other. If there is an incident at one, we all know about it right away and we all watch out for each other. And if we have to ban somebody, we usually do it together, we have done that in the past. And so we try to, we try to be great about communicating amongst each other with that. Same thing with door guys, just internally, if someone goes out the back door, let's say we remove a patron from the back door because they're being unruly or whatever reason, we're instantly communicating amongst all our doormen to let them know, you know, hey, this person, this name. We can't always get a name, obviously, we we aren't always able to get an ID. But if it's somebody, hey, red sweatshirt with a hoodie, I just had to remove them from the bar, they're not allowed back in. Our staff also rotates, so again, with the floating, with the the floating doorman that we we staff, no doorman, our doorman that are, that are staffed at the point of egress is that are not allowed to move, are not stuck there all night long. We have a, we have a rotation, so we have rotate, we have the two doormen at the front, we have our our floating doorman. And and throughout the night, they periodically rotate into different areas, you know, and takes the boredom away, it takes complacency away. It allows them, if it's warm or cold, to to warm up and 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 so on and so forth. And so that allows us to be able to stay on top of almost everything going on there. And so
So, Mr. O'Rourke? Mr. O'Rourke, yeah, so from your, I understand, that's a lot of good intent to try to, and probably a good history at the, at the spoke, because I haven't heard that it's a problem. But you have a potential of, as I read this, three hundred and forty-two people queuing out in front of the of the building right now, if you look at it. And you have how many people that'll be out, how many personnel, I won't call them bouncers, how many people out front would be taking care of that, that potential three hundred and forty-two while you're waiting to open up the the bar on the the last Friday night of school?
Yep.
You got how many people out there?
Yeah, two, it's it's well organized. We, you know, we we have queuing down the side of the, it's not, it's not just a a blob of of people all over the sidewalks and the streets, we don't allow that. And again, I mean, the reality is at the end of the day, it is a, Prairie Street is a public way. There, there is only so much we can legally do and we try our best, but go ahead, I don't want to interrupt.
Okay, so so then I guess the next question is for Rob or for Chris. So you try your best, you aren't able to control it some, some night, the police come and they try to, and they get it under control, right? What is this, what's the threshold where this becomes, where it's determined to become a a consistent problem or something that we have to, we have to deal with? How do we look at this? Because this is new to me, I mean, I don't know that we have another, I don't think we have another nightclub of five hundred people in this town. Or even a gathering outside from the University of, University of Massachusetts field houses and stuff. But we don't have a gathering spot for, I don't think, five hundred people anyplace else. Where, what's the kind of the tripwire to say, you know, we got to install, we got to go back and look at this, we've got to install some additional safeguards it, for either crowd control out front. I just, you know, because your two guys may not be able to do it consistently and there may be a problem. How do we look at that in the future, Rob? What do you do?
So, you know, first of all, I think it'd be the police department that would be responding and they're authorized on the nuisance regulations to to deal with noise and nuisance disturbances. So I think they would be, you know, first to the scene and and making decisions to either, you know, move a crowd along, you know, and decide if they're able to stay queued to, you know, potentially enter the establishment. You know, from that point, you know, we're, we're going to be enforcing whatever set of conditions that that this permit results in, along with the management plan that Chad has presented. And, you know, if there's deficiencies or if there's improvements that need to be made, it's it's a discussion, you know, that we have with with Chad or his manager. You know, it it happens, you know, we've had these situations from time to time. Chad's very responsive in any of the conversations that have taken place related to his establishment and has sought to make improvements and and been pretty successful at it. So, you know, we would use whatever tools we have in the permit and rely on the police department for the the late hours enforcement.
Yeah, but in case there's, in case it comes up with that, despite all the good history and the good intentions of spoke live, it's a continual problem. If we haven't put something in the conditions, we don't give you the tools to deal with it, is that right? Do we have to put something in our conditions? Or is there kind of a, is there, is there sort of a a standard that if it becomes too obnoxious, there's another, either bylaw or or local ordinance that allows us to take a look at this again or to limit the the gatherings outside?
So, so we're going to try to establish as many conditions as we can that we think will be effective. But then we're also going to suggest, you know, similar to what I did with, and and just as a reminder, the the current spoke was extended, doubled by an administrative approval through Article fourteen. So it was something that didn't come to the board. But a condition that what, that I put into that permit and would recommend into this permit is a review. You know, there could be a twelve-month and eighteen-month review, so that that's kind of the last stop for understanding problems that couldn't be resolved in the the other ways that are available or, you know, by the responsiveness of the the business owner. And that's something the board has typically done, and we can, you know, we can work on the language to make sure that that works for this particular situation.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Marshall, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to maybe reiterate or clarify my concern that that part of the dorm, outside doorman, the crowd control folks job is that, that, that people, if they want to go in, they're in a, in a line, either this queue or that queue. And there's not a mass of people chatting in the middle of Prairie Street. Because I live nearby and I do walk and drive through there all times a day. So it, you know, it it can't become like an outdoor, like a pedestrian mall, it really does have to be kept clear. And I just see kind of the the possibility for it to get disorganized because there are these sister establishments, you know, just like a hundred feet apart. So that's all, I just, I just want to know that that's, that road is going to be kept clear.
Yep, I understand.
Mr. O'Connor, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. O'Rourke.
No, no, Mr. Mr. O'Connor, you can, you can go first, because I'll address.
No, no, yeah, just answer Ms. Marshall's question, then I'll call on Mr. O'Connor. So, Ms. Marshall.
I I I couldn't agree more. I mean, that, these are all the things that, you know, again, when we, when we decided to make this move to go over there, I mean, part of it, you know, in 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 being completely honest to you, part of the reason we decided to do this was that after COVID, we were hoping that more, more bars would open or more places would would come back online for us because it is harder for us to manage the people outside than it is for us to manage the people inside, of course. And so, you know, the the objective here was, well, when when the pub went away and Old Town Tavern went away and, and, you know, maybe some of the other establishments downtown, I mean, the, the, the crowd control of Amherst isn't unique to Amherst, as as anyone who's been around for a long time knows. We've had many, many establishments over the years and unfortunately, we've lost a lot of them. And part of the reason we've decided to make this move is sort of because we had to. And 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 it's, we, we, the reality that we face in Amherst is we need more places for these students to be able to go because we don't want these massive lines, we don't want them congregating in in massive groups in downtown Amherst. We certainly don't want them doing that in basements of fraternities or in neighborhoods of residential properties. And and the reality is if we don't give them options in places to go, that is what's going to happen. And so, you know, with with this, it was one of our ways of trying to help a little bit and solve the problem because it was overwhelming for us and, you know, and and it is for everybody. And so, you know, if we could take the people that want to go out in downtown Amherst that create these lines and give them another place to go under management and control, it is a better option for for everybody. And so again, you know, everything we've done from the beginning of this and the design and the conversations and the meetings that we've had, we always knew it was going to revolve around noise control and crowd management control. And so, you know, we're, we are trying to put those elements in place. And I know you, and I understand you guys are doing that, that's the responsibility of you guys as well, is to make sure that you put those requirements in the the special permit that 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 enforced that. My personal objective is, I'd like to have, I'd like to own this place for a long, long time. You know, I I don't, I'm not going to turn around and sell it to someone else tomorrow. And I understand that, and as you guys evaluate this, you have to think about what's the worst case scenario of the future of the next person that may not manage it the way we manage it and and the things that you have to put in in place to do that. So again, from our perspective, we are trying to think about all those things and and how we can do it better. And I mean, that's always been, in my personal opinion, that's always been the way we function as a, as a business is, we are the standard in and how can we, how can we do it better and 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 make it right? That's how we've always tried to operate, so. Mr.
Mr. Mr. O'Connor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, as I, as I look at the queuing areas, one through four on the, the side of the building that faces Prairie Street, I I've observed high school students walking along that walkway for years. I think that the the potential numbers, there's a queuing capacity table on the right-hand side of the building at the lower right corner of the building as you look at the sheet. Those numbers are just, from my perspective, unrealistic. And I think that whether we have to have some kind of a public performance situation to demonstrate or whatever, but I I simply do not believe that in an outdoor situations, that many people can be accommodated in the areas that are described as one through four, either individually or collectively, simply on the sidewalk. I I think that it it'd be nice if it could happen if, but I don't believe that the the queuing numbers are a realistic approximation of what what people will, will tolerate and accommodate themselves to. And I I think we have to look very seriously at those numbers and and think about what's more realistic.
This, Mr. O'Rourke, would you have part of your management plan, would you be amenable to having part of your management plan to tell us how you would deal with crowds? I mean, you're, you're, when you're going to have a large number of people sitting and or standing along the sidewalk in front of your building and maybe spilling back to the other Jones buildings, it's going to be when the, before the club is opened up, probably, right? Because then you're going to bring in the, you're going to bring in up to five hundred people into your club. There may be people that are waiting outside, but that, that would be over the course of eight to, between eight and one o'clock, and you'll have some ability to move people on. So would your management, it would be helpful, I think, for Mr. O'Connor and maybe, and for Ms. Ms. Marshall, they can make up their own minds on this. And for me, maybe to have amend your management plan, say how you're going to handle that. Will you tell, we're not going to have people standing fifteen, more than fifteen minutes before opening. I don't know what the answer is for this, but some way to deal with a concern that I hear from two board members about the sort of aggregation of people out in front. And I think the time to worry about that is is before opening. And because you can move people and then to have something in your management plan saying that, you know, when we reach two hundred people standing up front or a hundred people standing up front, we're going to ask people to move along and come back later. So can you give some thought to that and would, and would you do that for an amended management plan?
Yeah, and you know, again, I I think for all intents and purposes of of these conversations, you know, part of of what we're here for obviously is asking permission to the board to allow this to happen. In in addition to that is to have, you know, those stipulations that put in, that be put in place that that make you guys comfortable of allowing this to happen, I mean, that's what we're here for. you know, those stipulations that put in, that be put in place that, that make you guys comfortable of allowing this to happen. I mean, that's what we're here for. So, you know, if, if the board felt that that's necessary to make it at a level of comfort for them, then, then certainly. I don't think that's unrealistic. I don't think it's unreasonable. I mean, these queuing numbers were done by an architect. So, so I mean, there, I, I think there would have, I would, I think there should be some sort of meeting in the middle of that. You're, 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 you know, Mr. O'Connor, you're basically questioning the professionalism of an architect and design, but I don't disagree with you on it. I, I get where you're coming from of, of taking that number and looking at the reality of the amount of people in that number. So I, I, I understand that as well.
So, you know, Mr. O'Rourke, what I would suggest is that you be prepared to come up with that plan yourself. Don't, I'm, I'm not the expert on how, how long you want to have people out in front, although I don't think you want to have them there for half hour and how many. And then kind of come back and come back to us perhaps with something that says, you know, for the, people cannot gather more than 15 minutes before opening or 30 minutes before opening, and there can only be so many people. And if we reach X amount, if they, so many people, my bouncers move, my outdoor people move them along. That would be part of your management plan. And, you know, and the same thing during the course of the evening. You know what I mean? That would be helpful.
Yeah, but I guess my question for you would be, wouldn't, isn't that something that you guys would be, then put in the special permit as a requirement?
We would. Yeah, we'd put it in as a requirement, but I want to get, you're the expert. And we're not the experts. You're the experts on crowd management, what you think happens with your, your place. And, and I think it's, it's somewhat arrogant of me to tell you what to do. And so I want to rely upon some of your expertise and see if you can come up to something that we'd agree with and then put it in the condition.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion to you. Would that be something that Ms. Marshall and Mr. O'Connor, would that respond to some of your concerns?
Yeah, I would say that there's gotta be a more realistic evaluation of how each, how, how many people can comfortably stand in each of the spaces for a period of time. And especially since, you know, with school out from mid-December through January, you miss a lot of winter, but it gets pretty cold out there. And I think your concern about how do you manage this amount of people? And, and what is a reasonable amount of people for each of the queuing areas, I think is, again, he's the expert. Let him come up with his, his thoughts on it so that we can evaluate them.
Mr. Ochella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one thing I also would ask of the board, if you don't mind me doing so, is if the applicant could provide more specifics for the live music, which I believe is just a DJ in the booth on the top right corner, but in the management plan, he doesn't really address that. So I was wondering if the board would consider asking Mr. O'Rourke to consider amending or at least adding a supplemental description of what he's going to do in terms of managing a live music and when it's going to be played, et cetera.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
Um, yeah, and I, I'm a little concerned about an indoor environment. At what point does an indoor environment decibel level tend to degrade the hearing of the individuals who are in the room for X amount of hours? And there's got to be some information about above 90, above 100, you know, whatever that, that level is, we've, I'm, I'm concerned, I've heard expressions about concerned about the outside decibel level. I am concerned also about the indoor decibel level that would, that might have a negative impact. I'm, you know, I'm, I'll be 82 in September. My hearing is still pretty good. But we don't want to be creating a situation where exposure to decibel levels that are not recommended is over a period of hours continuously that we, we allow that. So I, 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 I would like to hear something from Mr. O'Rourke about that because I think we should be concerned about the long-term impact on hearing of decibel levels inside that may damage the, the attendee's hearing.
Is there an indoor standard, Mr. O'Rourke, for bars?
Not that I was made aware of. Again, generally, if you're taking the 100 decibel rating of, of a nightclub or, you know, for, for sound, I, I don't know. I'm not a, a medical doctor that studied long-term decibel ratings on, on patrons. I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Mr. Brester or Mr. Mora, Mr. Brester or Mr. Mora, do you know if there's like health, health or regulations on this? Are there standards on indoor noise that in buildings that govern buildings in, in Amherst?
Or statewide.
We'll, we'll have to research it specifically for nightclub setting, Mr. Chair. I don't, you know, there's, there's different standards for construction and other, you know, situations, but for this one, I, I don't know.
Fine. I had a hard time hearing you because I went to many, went to too many loud rock concerts in the past. Ms. Marshall.
Yes. So back to the queuing capacity, I, I have no reason to dispute the architects. Like conversion factor, how many square feet for, per person. But I do want to make sure, and I just, if it's in the fine print, I just haven't seen it, and I apologize, that the architect is, is not using the entire width of the sidewalk, but only half of the sidewalk because, right, they have to be able, there has to be room for other people to pass by. So, so that these calculations are not to just how, how many people can be crammed onto the full sidewalk, but just half. So if you would confirm that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can ask my architect that. I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I think it was designed, you could see the dotted line that, that's on that. I, I think it's indicated to be that way. But I, I don't, I don't know.
It's, it says that's the set, it's called awning, but I think it's to stop it.
No, that might be yawning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Rob, are you keeping track of some of these requests for information that we have? Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I'll look through the recording tomorrow too, to, to double check on all those conditions.
All right. Yep. Mr. O'Rourke, we've interrupted your train of thought quite a bit. So what else would you, what else would you like to, what else did you have in plan for your presentation? So we can.
Nothing. I think, you know, again, I, I think the main subjects are, are of course the, the noise control and, and the crowd control. I think those are what everybody's major topics were here. I think the other stuff is, is pretty straightforward. So, you know, so any other questions that you guys as a board have that I can address at the, at the moment, based on, on those, feel free to interrupt me all you want for that.
All right. I've asked a lot and I'd open it up to other board members here for, I have some other questions, but I'd open up and give other, other board members a chance to ask some questions. Mr. Maxfield.
Yeah, if we're, it sounds like we're going to be just having a, I assume another meeting on this one. We've got a lot of information we need. Do you think it's possible we might be able to get an idea or some kind of measurement of what the noise level is outside the regular spoke on a weekend night between now and if this were to continue?
Are you asking, are you directing that question to me?
Yeah, that's, that's to you.
Um, yes, I'm sure we could. No, that can be.
That can, that could be a real helpful thing to, for us to judge the noise levels coming from the proposed establishment. Go ahead, Mr. Maxwell.
Actually, I just, just one follow-up because I know, so I live far enough away from spoke to be, to not be considered a butter, but sure by the end of this meeting, I'll be able to hear it. So the one thing I would definitely be interested in, it's the noise when the door is closed and everything is closed off. So I think when, as people are coming in and out, that's obviously going to let for, for a lot more noise to seep out. Which that's just going to be the nature of, of that business. But what it is specifically, I'd want to know, what does it sound like when everything is all kind of closed up and sealed?
I understand. And I would do it from, you know, we, we would certainly get, obtain information on multiple sides of the building, obviously, because again, that side that faces Garcia's is considered soundproof just by the sheer design of it versus the front of the building. Let's say. And same thing, back building, we have three doors that penetrated, so.
Thank you. That would be very helpful.
Ms. Brester.
I wonder if, if Mr. O'Rourke could provide information on how many people are normally queuing outside the existing bar, the existing spoke, you know, how much room do they take up? Maybe he can show on a sidewalk where they, where they stand and how many of them there are. And that might give a frame of reference to this new place that we're looking at and, you know, be able to judge one versus the other. Thank you.
That'd be valuable. Ms. Marshall.
I noted in one of the submissions, a comment that there should be a hydrant within 100 feet in the nearest existing hydrant is further away than that. So, Mr. O'Rourke, do you have any idea if the town will need to put in a hydrant and whose response, who, who has to make that happen and pay for it? I'm curious. Or, or whether the, it's not really, it's not a requirement just to.
I don't know. Maybe Rob, Rob Moore can answer that more. I, I certainly would direct that at Amherst Fire Department, I would think, but with the building being sprinklered, I don't know if that overrides that, Rob, or am I wrong there?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't override the standard that the fire department cited. So, you know, they've, they've noted that as a requirement and you know, there could be alternative compliance if, you know, a fire hydrant is 20 feet further than, you know, what the, the code requires. But that'll be, you know, these are all issues that would get sorted out through permitting. One way or the other, the fire department will be satisfied if there's, if there's a need for a hydrant and there, sometimes that's the case, relocating or adding an additional hydrant that's done at the cost of the applicant, not the town. So that would be something that, that they would be responsible for if there isn't another solution.
So, Mr. O'Rourke, I had a couple of quick questions. One is on the, on Plan A 1.1. So that's your, that's the floor plan. There's, it looks, appears to me to be either a door or some kind of an opening on the left-hand side, right above the apparel room. What is that? If you can just move the cursor over to the apparel room and right over there, what is that?
That, that was, that's eliminated. There used to be a, a side door there for the laundromats, no longer there. That's, that's bricked in. I, I don't know if it was on the floor plan or, or why Mark has that in there. My architect has that in there in the design, but there's nothing there.
Okay. Yeah. So that is not a, it's not an entrance or exit. All right. So we have to have the, you know, we're going to have to have the right plans for the, you know, final presentation, but you probably, if that's not going to be there, you gotta, you gotta fix it.
Being blocked in. It's, it, it doesn't show it as an opening. If you look at the, the other doors, the other doors have.
Yeah, that's weird. It has this, you know, a broken line. So, yep. Okay. All right. And then the other one I want to talk to you about is I'm a little concerned about, and Mr. O'Connor raised this as well on the site visit. I'm a little concerned about the, sort of the bulkhead, for lack of a better term, that runs along the sidewalk out in front of the, your, your, the three emergency exits. It's, I went over there today to measure it, to look at it, and it's 15 inches, 16 inches above the parking lot. And it's a little over seven, seven to eight inches, depending on the, you know, the sidewalk where you, where you measure it, seven to eight inches above the sidewalk. And I look at that and say, you know, on a clear day, and with your bright lights, it's probably, and when people, when there's not a lot of people there, that's not going to be a problem. But if you have a lot of crowd, if you have crowds, if you have an emerg, God forbid, an emergency situation where people have to get out, that looks like a recipe for real, real trouble, a real disaster, as people try to get out that, that, those emergency doors, the, the raised portion doesn't fit right in front of the emergency, the doors, they're kind, they're off, some of them are off the, off center. And you, you won't see that as you're running out. And the first person over that trips, then you've got a, I mean, you've got a soccer, you know, I think of a soccer style situation that I would hope to avoid. So, that was, the bar that existed there before must have had that same setup. How did they deal with? And how do you plan to deal with that situation? It seems to me that that might be something you want to talk to Jones about removing seven inches that the topper that runs along that sidewalk. Cause that, I just see in, in an emergency situation, that could really be a problem. So can you speak to that?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I understand where you're coming from that perspective. I mean, this is something that's been designed like that for a purpose. I would assume. We don't know if it's drainage or what, what the reason they did that. I, we're also going to, you know, again, we can only base on assumptions of why they designed this. And my, I think part of the assumption, it pivots people from stepping out onto the, the parking area because that's essentially what that is. The sidewalk is a 72-inch egress. It's, it's, it's a wide, they're not stepping out of the door and onto this area. In my personal opinion, I feel though there's, there's plenty of room to walk out that door and down a, a private sidewalk to, to the ends of the sidewalk where they, where they would be directed. Mr. O'Connor, go ahead.
But, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I would just say I, I recommend maybe for the board members and, and for the applicant to review the police reports on two, two license suspensions that were handed out to Panda East when that, when the, before the Amherst Select Board. What happened was that there was a complaint of underage drinking. The police came in and the patrons who were there exited the room in a big hurry. And my concern is that anytime these, the, especially the two westerly doors, the, the one that's opposite the bathroom is down a hallway that I consider a real hazard. But the two, the two doors that are, that, that exit the main room, they go out right to this real tripping hazard. And then even if that, that seven inch rise is eliminated, you then have a, another seven inches down to the sidewalk. That I think the entire area opposite from the, from these doors to the street because people are not going to turn right and left and use the sidewalk. They are going, if they're leaving this building under some duress of any nature, they're going to want to go straight out to the, to the, to Prey Street. And you can't do that with the current arrangement. That's a lot in, that, there are a lot of people that are proposed to be, be in this room. They are not going to turn right and left after they go out the doors. They are going to flow straight out these doors, both of the doors on the westerly edge and, and the, the egress from those doors to Prey Street has to be completely unobstructed. And it has to be in such a way that that there's a gradual slope that would be acceptable to the building inspectors so that people can exit that, the, the main, the dancing area or whatever, in a, in a safe manner. And yes, if you're, if you're leaving at the end of the day, no problem. But if you're leaving because of some emergency situation, this is a potential for people to break arms and legs and. This is a potential for people to break arms and legs and be injured in a lot of other ways that would would not make attractive photographs. And I just, I I I would urge the applicant to speak to the the property owner as had been suggested, and maybe have the architect look as to how to to make a clear path from those doors to what would be the safest location at that time of night, which would be Prey Street.
Mr. Mora, is there what what agency regulations govern the safe exit from a building in this situation? Who, who, is it Fire Department here? Is it the state building code? What governs what's considered safe in the state of Massachusetts or or in Amherst for exiting this kind of, in the in this type of building?
It's the state building code enforced by the building.
Yep, and is, does this comport with the state building code right now?
Well, well, it does. You know, it has, it has the wide sidewalk in front of the building. You know, I think there's, you know, Mr. O'Connor's raising other types of issues that, you know, are worth considering that could potentially be hazardous, but it doesn't necessarily mean it violates the code. You know, by providing the sidewalk either direction with a sloping walkway to the to the public way satisfies the code. But that doesn't mean there couldn't be improvements, or there doesn't mean that there aren't hazardous situations under, you know, certain scenarios. So but I don't think it's a code issue.
Okay. Well, I guess that would be something you need to, Mr. O'Rourke, I I would think you would want to try to address at the very least, the if there's something you can do with the seven inches and come to the board and talk about that, maybe at the next meeting, talk to Jones and see what they think. I know Mr. O'Connor had a more expansive concern than I raised, but I'm looking at us, I'm just looking at that, and I don't wanna think the worst of all possible situations, but I just don't know how, in a bad situation, how that would be safe.
Yep, I understand that.
I do have a concern about that.
I mean, the argument against it is it's a, it's a parking area in front of it. I think that's one of the purposes of the curb thing. I mean, I can't imagine, you'd have to look at the downtown drivers, could make the same argument that says anybody that's gonna ru- walk out of a a a bar or anything in downtown is not just gonna go run out onto North Pleasant Street blindly. There's all parking in front of that as well, so.
Yeah, but there's not a seven-inch rise before the you don't have a seven-inch rise before the street. That's, that's what, that's what I'm concerned about. That's what I saw for my concern. Ms. Marshall.
I would say it would be too bad to create a more likely hazard while trying to prevent an unlikely hazard by removing that curb, which keeps helps to keep people from falling off the sidewalk as they're just walking as opposed to fleeing. Secondly, perhaps part of this concern can be addressed by the management plan, that is, what are those doormen doing in the case of an emergency? No, they're not just pushing people out the door, but some of them are outside safely guiding people you know, to a to a safe, to a safe exit.
I think that, you know, you do raise a good point about not creating an additional hazard. A railing perhaps would make sense, you know, that would keep people from coming over, from falling over that seven-inch rise. That would might be one way to address it. And I think, I think Ms. Marshall's suggestion on the, having it addressed in the management plan also makes a lot of sense. Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah, I I'm, you know. If people have observed the results of even a small number of people in the hundreds panicking in a, in a, in enclosed area. I mean, and there are a number of unfortunate circumstances that are available for discussion. People who are in a panic are not going to be able to be managed. They are going to run. And and that is why I mean, these, this sidewalk is nowhere near as wide as some of the sidewalks in the in the other part of downtown. And people are not going to be able to be managed by a doorman or two if there is an emergency. And and therefore we have to create a structural situation that will accommodate the emergency. Because if everything i- if if there weren't the possibility of emergencies, then the building inspector could could be the one to permit this such a building such as this. But that's not the case. And I think it is important that we can't plan for every emergency, but we can, we can say that in an emergency the exit doors have to safely accommodate patrons who are probably not going to be walking out calmly.
Is that a hand raise, Mr. Maxfield?
Uh, yeah. Just, I think just another consideration for us on this matter, too. I think if we were to have it remove the, that seven-inch rise directly outside of the doors where it's gonna be painted as well, I think it does create also a more clear delineation of where people are and aren't supposed to be standing as well as improving safety, because in normal circumstances, in an emergency, people would simply leave and go down the sidewalk. But where I think in the event of an emergency, people inside are gonna know what that is before the people on the sidewalk do, and when people come out, they're gonna have a crowd to their right and their left and are going to go forward into that that seven-inch barrier. I think possibly a railing to raise it so it's not a tripping hazard. It is a possibility as well, but I think there is a benefit to if it can be removed just outside those doors. I think it 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 creates a lot of benefits as well as a improved safety.
Mr. Slovater.
Uh, the, I think this is a valid topic to pursue, especially in the era of guns and random shootings and who knows what, that's sort of the extreme emergency that comes to mind with all this. I think a railing would be a terrific idea for not non-emergencies to control the movement. I that might be helpful, but if we're really talking about emergencies, a railing will restrict movement, it will trap people. And for some reason, the the incident in, I think it was South Korea earlier this year, where a hundred people were trampled because they were in a confined area is, I don't think we wanna confine the area. I think I'd rather have a few broken bones than than crushing. I have to, I have to comment that I'm very impressed by Mr. O'Rourke's general answers and his his management history and the proper staffing and all of that. So there is there's reason in my mind to to give credibility to everything that he has been saying about operations. But if we are now discussing emergency situations with with stampeding people who have just heard a bunch of gunshots, and I can't believe anybody would think that a gun incident is not possible. A stampede is the word that comes to my mind, and that's really what we're, we're talking about. It's, we love to think it's unlikely here in lovely tranquil Amherst, but they thought that in Louisville and everywhere else, so stampedes out of the door don't need a seven-inch lip, they don't need a railing. They need safe, quick egress. I don't know, I'm not proposing an exact solution, because I think a non-gradual ramp is almost as bad as a step, so I'm not, I'm not sure what exactly to do, but if we're talking about a lot of people coming quickly out of three doors, we we need them to disperse very quickly without tripping hazards.
Well, Mr. O'Rourke, can you put your thinking cap on and talk with your architect and talk with Jones? Maybe you can come back with some ideas. You've heard some thoughts here about the concerns we, I I think pretty well expressed by the board. I didn't, I bet you didn't think this was gonna be the issue that we spent this much time on, but I think in today's world, it's just something we have to think about, especially when you're looking at a, at a five hundred, hopefully, you'll have a full, you'll have a full establishment, and you'll have five hundred people that that you have to think about. So that'd be really, really helpful if you do that and come back with some ideas, and we'll give it some thought as well. Mr. Wachilla.
Would it be okay with the board if I shared a list of concerns and talking points from tonight's meeting with the applicant, just so he has a good idea of what to bring?
Oh, absolutely. Okay. I think before we get done tonight, we're gonna go through a list of things that we, of of ideas or questions that we have, we're gonna have, just so we all are on the same page, and of course, Mr. O'Rourke should have that, cuz otherwise he won't be able to answer them.
Bob, you can email, you can email all that stuff today. That'd be, that'd be easier and better, you know, kind of the hitting points. I've been making my own, my own list of stuff, but I mean, again, I think we, I I mean, I I do think that we all kind of knew the subjects that were gonna matter to everybody and and the ones that we address the most. So, yeah, but yes, if you can, you know, that's, that'd be fun.
Okay.
That'd be helpful. One thing that I did notice, I think we've exhausted a discussion about the the sidewalk and the ramparts, or whatever we wanna call it. One of the questions I did have was is there, there's not a traffic impact statement, and we haven't really dealt with traffic a lot. And I know you have an assertion in your, in your application that you don't think there's gonna be a lot, a large impact. Is that something that members of the board are comfortable with? Do we think this is sort of a common sense approach? Do you think we need to have a a traffic impact statement from the applicant? And I would like just to hear a discussion about that and then move on, because if we're, if we're gonna require one, he should know about it now. If we're not gonna require one, I don't wanna have to burden the applicant with an unreasonable bur- unreasonable task. So what do people think? Mr. Maxfield, have you have some thoughts on this? You, I mean, I know you're, I kind of rely upon you, because I know you're on the the licensing board, you've got some experience with bars and and, I mean, not your personal experience with bars, but your professional experience, your volunteer experience with bars. What do you think about that? And what do you think about the the need for traffic impact statement?
My initial feeling is is probably not, just because I think although I definitely think Spoke Live is going to be a little much more busy than Old Town Tavern was, if you consider we already had Old Town Tavern there, and we had the pub at one point. All of Spoke was still operating there. I don't think it was causing any traffic issues that I'm aware of. I don't expect this to cause more traffic issues of people driving there. I think you're gonna see you know, Uber coming down there, but where Prey Street, I almost feel like does get treated like a it is a public way, but it is often treated as a kind of like a parking lot road. You're going in there if you're going to those businesses. I imagine most traffic would still continue down North Pleasant to the Rotary. Would be my expectation. I could probably be, I I might be able to be convinced that I'm I'm wrong in this, and we might need a traffic study, but if you're asking me, I I don't think we would need one.
Mr. Judge, can I?
Ms. Marshall. Absolutely, yes.
And what Mr. Maxwell touched on, so Rideshare Services, that is something that was was brought up in here, and I and wasn't discussed real quick, but just to give you guys a little bit of a answer on that. So obviously, that is the the major thing. We do not get a lot of people that drive. A lot of people walk, a lot of people use the the public transportation, and a lot of people use Rideshare. We do not allow the Ubers or whatever the businesses are these days of Rideshare to to stop at the main road of East Pleasant Street. We do direct them down Prey Street for those purposes of and what Mr. Maxfield says, where the, you know, the perception of Prey Street has always been sort of that of a parking lot side street. That is the truth. That is, there, there's not a whole heck of a lot of activity. I think Jason Skiles from the town would would support that. And so, you know, with the Rideshare aspect of things, we direct them down Prey Street for those purposes, because it's safer, easier for them to not have to turn around and continue, come down from East Pleasant, continue down Prey Street to College Street and around. So that is, I'm sure, one of the topics that would come up in this, and and that is how we handle that.
Ms. Marshall. Did you have your, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. O'Rourke has a couple times said College Street. I think you mean Triangle Street. Is on the other. Yeah, not even close. I I don't see a need for a traffic impact study, but I would like to see on one of the drawings and actually, you know, some markings for where you ask the ride shares to queue up. I'm into like, and if you, if they're coming in from East Pleasant, you know, if you envision it as a one-way flow, I I would like to see that on a drawing. I mean, it, I think you said that at that time of night, there's very little few vehicles are parked in front of the building and either of those Jones buildings, so is it on that side, kind of across the 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 parking spots that you're asking these vehicles to queue up? Anyway, that that's why I think a drawing would be helpful to me.
Like I said, the parking aspect of things, you'd you'd be surprised to see, you know, in that perspective, in front of the building, down the Jones Building, of how many open spots there are at night, which goes to show you the lack of of driving, which is good. That's what we encourage. We don't want anybody leaving and getting into a vehicle, so we obviously do our best to encourage the ride sharing.
You know, that's a, that would could be a really persuasive piece if there was a, I mean, even a first study, just of how much parking is available on a given night, just from the the existing spoke patrons and clientele. If there's still a lot of parking available there now, that tells us something, I think, indicative of of the users, the customers that you're likely to get. But even that would be, even that, if you would do that, that would be valuable, just even, I mean, we'd have to take you at your word for it, just kind of go out, take a look and do a survey, but that would be valuable. Mr. Slovater, did you have your hand up?
I, oh, wait a minute. Oh, I'm unmuted, how about that? I sort of did, mostly I was just touching my face. I I think that a comment that Mr. O'Rourke made when we were at the site visit of that he, the that Spoke is only open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday with an occasional Sunday, perhaps, and that they don't open until eight o'clock. I have been on Prey Street at, in the evening, and it's close to a ghost town most nights. It's really quiet. The business is closed, so there's sort of an inherent protection against traffic problems, because no one else is there. And I thought that was actually a valid point, that his hours of operation coincide beautifully with all of his neighbors not being there. So I I find that credible, and I I actually agree with Mr. Maxfield that my initial inclination is that a a traffic study is not, is not necessary unless somebody walks down, walks there on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday and sees a problem, but I have never seen one, and I've driven through there. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that that's the case.
Mrs. Marshall, you said you live in that area, so I think you probably could verify that as well, by by living in that part of the community. I'm I'm sure you, you've seen that to be true as well there.
That's true, although I must say, if I'm driving up East Pleasant, because I I I might take Prey Street over and then up to Cottage Street. Frankly, when I see so many people outside the spoke, I just stay on. Frankly, when I see so many people outside the spoke, I just stay on East Pleasant. Because I don't really want to, you know, drive in where maybe there are a lot of people milling about. So, so I guess I'll, so I don't in fact drive there, at least on when the spoke is open. Or at least there are queues. But yes, generally it's pretty darn quiet.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm familiar with the street because from about 2006 to 2014, I was the transportation for four teenagers who attended and their, and their teammates and classmates who attended Amherst Regional High School. And so the, the only traffic I would say that will end up there is maybe some foot traffic from football games, basketball games, track and field meets and so forth. Soccer, soccer games, maybe foot traffic to the buses. Just speaking of the buses though, I, I would, given that the, the hours, the closing hours proposed to be one o'clock. I wonder if we could, if the staff could forward to us the bus schedules for the buses that run on East Pleasant Street past here that would be used. Cause I, I think even university students who might come to this location would tend, might tend to take the buses that run through the center of the campus. So it'd be good to know when those buses, I, I, I was the ride home last spring from February to May for somebody who got off of work at 11, you know, 12:30 at night and lived on East Hadley Road. And so I'm familiar with driving down East Pleasant Street at this, at these times of nights and how few buses there are. So it would be good to have some information about the bus service. And also if we, if we had, and I, in providing rides to people who don't have cars. I, I have, I've gotten occasional, yeah, I, you know, I tried to call an Uber, but I couldn't find anyone. So there are times and seasons and so forth where the availability of Uber and Lyft activity is not, not all that great. So I, if there's some kind of way that those organizations could provide us with information on their, the, the extent of their operations and the availability of, of drivers. It, it would, it would be helpful. I, I don't know whether they can do that. All I know is from personal experience that those who's who, who work in the healthcare field mostly, who, who do not have automobiles often are, their coworkers refer them to me because they can't find an Uber when they need one. And so I think that's all part of trying to figure out. I mean, I think the, the other members who have said that they don't think of the traffic survey is needed, I think are correct. But I think if we're going to depend on the buses and Uber and Lyft, we need to have some parameters before us so that we can have thoughtful discussions about how realistic all this is.
So Rob, can you get bus schedule? That'd be easy enough to do. I'm not sure how you get a survey of Lyft, Mr. O'Connor. I don't know how they get a survey of Lyft.
Just ask them how many drivers are available in this area.
I, I don't even know how, where you'd go for that. Maybe they can figure it out, but I don't know. You call San Francisco and ask them. I, I just don't know what you do.
No, I, I think to have regional coordination, you could, I mean, there's a way to contact them, obviously. They, a lot of people contact them every day. So the question is just do they, can they tease out from the, from their information? Something would be helpful to us.
Worth a shot.
See what you can do. I, I think it's, yeah, what's important is we, we know we can get the, we got a lot of information from the bus. We can get that. Might be able to get something from, from Lyft and Uber. If you can, it's a, it's a bonus, I think, but it's a, it may be really time consuming to try to search that out. And again, I think that if the last thing you can do is, you know, if a couple of photographs over the next couple of weeks would be really helpful. It shows us how empty the parking lot is at 10 o'clock. That's just, I think that would actually kind of seal the deal, I think, on a traffic study and, and remove that as an issue, Mr. O'Rourke. Okay? That'd be helpful. Yep. Ms. Presto?
So I was thinking that Mr. O'Rourke must have information about the availability of Uber and Lyft if those two services are already serving his clients. So maybe he could help to provide some of that information too.
Yeah. I mean, I've never, ever contacted them directly, like Mr. Judge had indicated. I don't, I don't know how you would go about that. But I mean, we as, as the, the operators of the business and, and employees of the business see it utilized often, you know, and it's a service, I think that is readily accessible. I, I wouldn't know how to answer Mr. O'Connor's question on that because I, I don't know it to not be accessible by anybody that needs it, you know, and, and getting the PBTA schedule obviously would, would certainly be a an indication to, would be able to answer one, one of that, part of that question. But the accessibility of Uber, Lyft, those, those apps these days, as far as I know, are generally very accessible. Especially, you know, if you're talking about during the hours of our operation, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, where it's not an obscure day. That's, that's the day I think where they, they are running the most and are the most accessible.
Okay. So do we have other, do we have other questions, comments, concerns? Things that people wish to have at least addressed in any conditions that we impose? We may impose if we decide positively on this application at the next meeting. I guess I just had one last thing, and this is, I think this is what you were referring to that you just discovered today, Mr. O'Rourke. But on page nine of the project application report, under the terms from the fire department, from Mr. Bascom's letter, he talks about consider requiring emergency responder radio coverage in accordance with section 916 of the MSBC and NFPA 72 sections 24.5. I have no idea what those are, but I would guess that that's the, what you were talking about, correct? I mean, I had it outlined for you to explain it to me, but, but you didn't. We, we both are in the dark, but it's the, it's the radio access, right?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Moore enlightened me on it today on, on, on what it is and, and explained better of what the system is. But that, that's exactly, you know, what we had talked about before. It's a, it's a reactionary thing. Once the, you know, once the sound mitigation systems are put into place and, and that's satisfied, I think at that point during their inspections of, to, to sign off on, from the fire department's perspective of things, that's part of the, what they perform in their inspections. And if they determine it to be a necessity to, to install this booster system, that, that it gets done.
And then the design review board had three requests that they had, they made. One includes the hours of operations on the door. One talks about the main entrance, putting a sign on the north side of the building saying main entrance this way, pointing to the main entrance. And the last is that all trim and including doors and awnings to be painted white. Are you willing to put that? Is that something you intend to do? And if we put that in a condition, is that something you would do? I mean, I know you do it if you put it in a condition, but is that something you're willing to do?
Yeah, it's not something I'm not willing to do. I think during that design review board discussion, you know, part of the, the argument to the signage thing was that it may not be necessary because the reality is, is you're going to know where to go. The, the, it's a suitable subject to put, to put a sign that says this way to here. And then the lighting, the illumination.
Yeah, this way to the front door. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, you see where the line, the QE starts, you see where the doormen are, you, you know, you see the illuminated part. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but again, if the board at the end of, of everything deems it necessary, then so be it. And the illuminated signs, I, I don't personally want to illuminate the signs. I, I don't find it necessary to. If the, if the, i- i- in, in terms of maybe like a sign box, we could certainly put a downward lighting over the sign. That's what we have at the, the current spoke building. Our spokes signs are not illuminated per se as like a, a sign box goes where you think about the illumination from behind the sign, they're illuminated above the sign. You know, that's a topic we had discussed with the design review board as well. So they didn't specify, you know.
Yeah, I don't see that as.
Or anything. It's just sort of lighting the sign. And I think part of the topic that came up, the reality is, is then, I mean, people are going to know we're there. I think that was one of the topics that, you know, so again, with the design review board, they, they sort of left it up for discussion.
Yeah. I guess the, the white trim is the agreed upon thing and the others are asking you to consider it, right?
Yeah, that's there. That's just what we're going to, I think what the, the subject that came up with that one was, you know, what do you, the, the, the brick is the brick and the, the roof is the roof and what, what's around the rest of that? What's the trim around the windows? And it's white wood trim and, and you know, the discussion was that we're just going to paint it nicely, make it clean looking. And, and there's nothing majorly impactful with that.
I, I don't want to supersede the judgment of the design review board because I don't have any sense of good design anyway. So that's their job. Ms. Marshall, you have a good sense of judgment and?
Oh, no, no, I'm not. I'm just asking. I'm not going to claim, claim that, but I know there's a, a street light, you know, in the parking lot. And there are probably some right on East Pleasant. So I wonder if, if the light is so downcast, it doesn't illuminate the building at all, or, or whether it will in fact be lit by the lights that are present.
Right above the corner, right above where that entrance is between us and the bank, there's some pretty major lighting right there on the parking lot. It's very well lit.
Perhaps somebody, and maybe I'll be walking there in the dark, you know, just notice if the light impinges on the sides of the building.
Okay. Any other? Yeah. Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah. I wondered if we have any observers who might have suggestions, something that we've entirely missed. I don't know if any hands have been raised in the audience. But if, if there are, this might be a time to check with.
We, we will, we will get to public comment soon as we're done with our discussion and there, and that will be shortly. But we're trying to wrap up the discussion right now amongst board members and the, and the applicant. But I, I agree. It's always helpful to have the public comment. Any more comments from the board? All right. Let's see if there's public comments. And if you do have a comment you wish to make, please raise your hand. And if so, we'll call upon you with the help of the staff. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record and address your comments to the board and try to keep your comments to around three minutes.
So Mr. Chairman, we do have, we do have one hand raised from Pamela Rooney. Do you want me to make her talk? Okay.
Yep.
Alrighty.
Bring her into the room.
There you go.
Let's see if you could make me talk. Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. So I often come down Cottage Street and I cut right across to Prey Street because I don't. And I would not be able to see what kind of crowd was there until I get around the bend. I want to talk a little bit about the traffic on that street. It, it is foot traffic that does worry me. Oftentimes when I come down Prey Street, I have to ease my way past people starting to queue up at spoke number one. Thank you for the question about when does the bus run? I'm not sure the answer, but that's a very good question. So even though there may not be a lot of vehicle traffic on that street, there also has never been a 560 person venue on that street before. So we don't really know the draw. We don't really know the Uber traffic even to bring people there. The, the, you've all brought up some very, very good questions about the queuing and the noise outside. In terms of the queuing, what occurs to me is that at spoke number one, the queue is the sidewalk and that completely fills the public sidewalk, which we're expecting our high school people going downtown to use. We're expecting other people to use. And that, that is a concern. I have had to ease past people that spill out, either coming across East Pleasant Street or spilling off of the sidewalk on the north side of Prey Street. The, the concern, another concern on the, this new side of the, of Prey Street, the south side of Prey Street is that again, queuing will be essentially filling that sidewalk. And so those of us who walk that side of the street or anyone coming from East Pleasant Street to join the queue will end up having to skirt the parked cars, which puts everybody, literally everybody but the queue in jeopardy of, of the traffic. So it's probably not vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic that most concerns me. If there are, if there's a plan where Uber queuing can occur, that would be very helpful. Parking spaces, I know there are 32 spaces across the street. I don't, I don't know where the 20 number came from because at that hour of night, I think, I don't know, I don't know what's being occupied now, except those, those folks that have the general permit that live in typically in Kendrick Place. Trying to cover all my notes here. Number, number one concern, never, ever, ever any outdoor dining or outdoor music, please. Number two, can somebody provide a comparison of the number of 560 patrons, compare it to what does the spoke, spoke number one currently contain? What are the other downtown just establishments like the Drake? I don't remember those numbers, but I think we should refresh our memory on that. All of those other places, perhaps except the Drake, are places that serve food and some alcohol. This is going to be a alcohol only, pretty much establishment. And behavior, noise, all of that has to be, all of your management has to be commensurate with this alcohol only activity with a great deal of, a great number of people. I looked at the, looking now going inside slight restrooms. Does that meet the state code? Does that meet the state code for drinking establishments again with no food? It's not a restaurant where you, you know, use the restroom once. This is lots of, lots of liquid, lots of volume. I lived in North Amherst across from what is now the Harp, Mike's Westview Cafe. Notoriously had people urinating outdoors all the time because they had insufficient restrooms in that facility. And we certainly don't want that happening in Kendrick Park. You've talked about noise. Thank you for bringing that up. Again, it is the noise in the queues outdoors that concerns me the most than, than the carefully managed indoor noise. So kindly consider that outdoor noise. And I look forward to more of that discussion about the seven inch curb, which is to keep people from stepping off to the parking area as a normal walker. I, I totally understand the concerns raised about the, the emergency egress. And hopefully you'll talk about that again. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney. Any other comments from the public? All right. This is the opportunity for you, Mr. O'Rourke, to respond if you, if you need to. I mean, I know a lot of those subjects have already been discussed, discussed, but if you wish to respond to any of the public comments.
Yeah, the bathroom, the bathroom.
Now's your opportunity.
The bathroom concern by Mrs. Rooney is done by a code. And so the bath, our capacity is The bathroom concern by Mrs. Rooney is done by a code. And so the bath, our capacity is determined by the bathrooms. So I can't have three stalls in a five hundred person capacity. It doesn't work that way. The architect was hired to design, design the capacity based on, there, there's two things that come into play. The, the bathrooms and then the square footage and the capacity determined based on that the bathrooms are sufficient to meet that capacity. So that's all done by code. So that hopefully will satisfy her concern on that, but, but it is, it is determined that way. There is an architectural design board that's in place to, to design those and meet those requirements. So, so that, that satisfies that. As far as the capacity in the general area, I mean, there's a great history of, of that being there. There's four hundred and sixty-five person capacity amongst the places that are no longer there. So we are seeking a greater capacity than what was there in the past. And, but the town has grown around that. The university has grown around that, but it is not unique to this area to have that patron capacity there in a bar, a bar format. You know, Amherst Pub was a restaurant by day, but at nighttime it was Amherst Pub. And Old Town Tavern was a bar. And so again, if you look at the history of that, of that area, we're not creating something that hasn't been there for, you know, a century. So it's not, it's, what's going on there is not unique to what's been there in the past. So that, that's, oh, that matter.
So what I'd like, what I propose is that we run through the questions that, and requests we had come up with tonight. We review those now, share them with, verbally we'll share them with Mr. O'Rourke. And then we, then Rob, you create a list for tomorrow and distribute that to the board and to Mr. O'Rourke. Make sure that we all are on the same page for kind of a task of a list of things to have at our next meeting on this subject. So I don't know if Chris or Rob, who's, who started to keep that list of requests for information or comments?
I can always look back through it. I just have to turn the page to my notes here. All right. So so I believe most of them were brought up during the discussion phase of the meeting. Okay, so the so I believe the first and most important was to have a plan on how to address the queuing outside in terms of people lining up and how much of the sidewalk is going to take. Another one was to
Amendment to the management plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Amendment to your management plan.
And then Vince brought up the indoor desk level negative impact on patrons inside. How that should be addressed as well. I don't know if that was an amendment to the management plan, or if that's something the applicant had to look into further.
Yeah, let's look into.
Especially for nightclubs and the levels that are produced inside the establishment.
Correct.
Let's see. The chat is to follow up with the architect regarding how they calculated the number of patrons along the walkway, whether it was just done for half the sidewalk or if it was done for the full with the sidewalk itself. Dylan suggested having Mr. O'Rourke provide a measurement of sound from outside the current spoke and bring that to the board at the next public hearing meeting for this permit. And then Vince recommend us, the staff, to look into the two license suspensions for Panda East for underage drinking. To see.
In terms of crowd reaction.
The crowd reaction, my apologies.
Yeah, in, in terms of how they behaved, once the police centered the, the establishment.
All right, taking note of that. All right, the next seven fifty-three, we had Sarah mentioning that the management plan should address what the bouncer should do in emergency evacuation situation, how they're going to direct the crowd when they're exiting the building. In regards to the curbing, the applicant should discuss with the property management group and your architect about how to address that in front of the entrance points. It was discussed that the railing may not be the best idea from Dave, who brought that up. Might be wise to just eliminate the curb in front of the egress points. So you prevent people from tripping over it as they're exiting in a panic. Then we also have, so the traffic study didn't really seem necessary from the board, but that is something that you could consider as a condition if there's a problem that arises. Bus schedule, which we'll provide, that was requested from Vince. Getting info for rideshare availability for the Prey Street area. I don't know how we're gonna do that for just Prey Street specifically. I feel like companies like that will probably only provide it for the whole town. But I can always look into it for, for the sake of this permit. And then photographs that are timestamped over the next few weeks showing what that area looks like. I believe it was in regards to the rideshare line as well as what the crowds look like. I believe, Sarah, you brought that point up, correct?
Well, the crowds, but also someone mentioned just is the, are the parking lots in fact empty?
Yeah.
Just how empty are they? Yeah.
All right.
Just what does it look like at ten o'clock at night? What does it look like on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, ten o'clock at night? That's all, that gives us an idea, right?
All right. Then we have the applicant should amend the management plan to address the fire department comments that were submitted after the management plan was sent into us. I believe Steve had brought up the designer review board conditions that should be implemented. It seems like the directional sign may be unnecessary in this case, but I don't know if he would rather address that at the next hearing, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, I think we'll just, we'll leave it up to the, what, what the, what I think we should do is put in our conditions, the design review board requirements. And if they say, just consider, we don't have to go beyond that.
Okay.
What they, if they decide us, that just about a sign and they should consider it, that's all we have to do. We don't have to require that.
Okay. Um, let's see what else. And Sarah, I believe, brought up we should determine if the lighting on the sides of the building are good enough to light up those alleyways. I believe it was on the left side as well as the right side of the building. Am I correct on that? Oh, sorry, you're muted.
Sorry, not the alleyways, but are the, the, where the signs will go.
With the signs.
Are these areas illuminated already? Do we, is there in fact a need for illumination?
So one, one other thing was the, was the give some context for the air ex, the air exchange. If, if they can be gotten from UMass or from local schools or whatever, where they have similar areas, the enclosed areas with large numbers of people post pandemic. So we have a, a context into which the, the applicant's proposal can be fit or compared.
So. By code requirement, though?
I'm not, it's not like
exchange, air exchange.
Yeah, I understand that there's code requirements. But I'd like to, I'd like to know what others have done. And what, and what you proposed to do and see how that, I mean, I, I would expect that the likelihood is not, not all of the the examples are going to be the same. And we, we'd be good to have some kind of sense of what other businesses and institutions are doing with enclosed large capacity spaces.
All right. Capacity spaces. All right, then we have public comment section. There was one thing that was brought up by Ms. Rooney. I don't know if the board wants to consider adding this as well, but it was in regards to comparing the five hundred and sixty-six patrons versus the number of nearby establishments. I don't remember specifically what that comparison is for. I don't know if it's just determine what that would look like in regards to the spoke being open nighttime, like what that crowd would be in terms of size as compared to other businesses in the area. Believe Sarah, you have your hand up.
Well, I think an earlier request maybe from Mr. Judge might address that in part, and that was to get some, I think, somebody, some noise measurements out where the, where the current queues
Yeah.
form.
So I believe I
just how noisy are, just how noisy are these people when, when they're waiting to get it?
So I believe I addressed that at an earlier point as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, it's okay. I'm glad you clarified.
I think, I think was, I think Mr. O'Rourke responded to at least part of Ms. Rooney's request, which was how many people, how many, how big a facility was existed there before with the two establishments that are now gone. And then I think Ms. Rooney said, wanted to know about how large are other places in town? And I think that's information that's readily available by the licensing, by the licensing board about how large the a capacity is for various places on Pleasant Street. I think that's what, I think that would satisfy her request.
Okay.
But I, I mean, but, but, but I, you know, that's, it would be interesting for us to have as well.
Okay. So you would want to know the number of businesses in the immediate area that have crowds of similar size? Is that correct?
No, just how big is, you know, what, what's the capacity for Bistro sixty-three? What's the capacity for the bar next to it? What's the capacity for, you know, that's, that's what we're looking for. And what, what was the capacity? Yeah, for the Drake was another one. And what was, what was the capacity of the two places that left that no longer are there? And you've mentioned it already, Mr. O'Rourke. And if you could just give it to Rob right now, that we could solve part of that information request. You knew what it was, I think.
We're sixty-five.
Between the two of them.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I'd have to go back and look into that. I think I, that was a record and it can be obtained.
I can check with Mr. McCarthy tomorrow and see if he has the information available.
They'd have that.
And then that's, that's all I had on my list. I mean, was there anything that I missed?
That's pretty much it. You can, you can review the tape, review the tape tomorrow and see if there's something else, but I think you've got a pretty good list. Ms. Brushup?
I just wanted to say that Rob and I will put our heads together tomorrow and go through our notes. And if we come up with anything else, we'll make sure that we include it in the list. Okay?
Sounds great. That sounds great. All right. So what I would like to do is continue this public hearing until a later date and Chris, when is the next open meeting? Is it next week or is it the next meeting we have, which does not have an agenda or does not have a full agenda?
I believe that would be May eleventh. Is that right, Rob?
Yep. So the twenty-seventh of April already has a public hearing scheduled. May eleventh does not have anything scheduled that we're aware of.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay. Let's, it gives us about three, over three weeks to almost a month to do that. So I move that we continue this public, I would accept the motion to continue this public hearing until May eleventh.
So moved to six P M.
Yep, six P M.
Six P M. Thursday, May.
Normal place and time. Right. So moved, is there a motion of second?
I'll second it.
Maxfield seconds. Is there any discussion on that motion? The only discussion I've had is I'm, I am inclined, I think this is a really good idea. And I think there's something we'd be able to, I appreciate working with the applicant, the way we've gone through it today. And I think that this has real, pretends real benefit for the town. And I think you've been very responsive to some of the requests of the board. So I'm looking favorably upon this at this time. But I'd like to see the rest of this information and make sure we can work through with the conditions that we've been talking about. And some of those may make all of us more comfortable. That's my, my discussion about this motion. Anybody else? If not, it's a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Slobodar?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We'll see you on May eleventh.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Bye.
The next order of business is public comment on anything not before the board tonight. Is there any? Is there any public, members of the public who wishes to speak on a subject not before the board tonight? I do not see anybody raising their hand. The last order of business is anything that has not come up in the last forty-eight hours. And I guess the one thing I would like to talk about would be the upcoming meetings. So we have one on the twenty-seventh. And what is that?
So just to give some background, that's for a permit on Sun Dolen Road. The project is for battery storage, so BSS. It's, I'm not sure of the specifics of the size of the facility. I still have to create the P R for that. I believe there's, Rob, if I'm not mistaken, there's eight units that's going on that site. Is that correct? And I believe they already went to Concom. They have an order of conditions with them. So I, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for the order of conditions to be met, but it would be wise to consider those for our hearing as well, because a lot of them address site specific issues and concerns, especially with runoff from rainstorms, et cetera. But that is what's coming up on the twenty-seventh. And then one more thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to bring to your attention is that we do have some pending forty B permits in the near future. We're seeing some that are probably going to come up over the summer. So KP Law, we did meet with them yesterday to discuss these permits and they suggested maybe coming to one of the Z V A meetings or having a time during the week that works for everyone to train the board, the entire board, including alternates on the forty B process, just so everybody's familiar with what the role of the board is, what to expect. These hearings tend to take several meetings. So usually you address certain specific aspects of the permit over maybe the course of four to five separate hearings. What the responsibilities of the board would be and educate everyone. So all eight members, I believe, sorry, nine members. So if people have to step in, those people will know what to do in a sense. So I, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I also sent up a follow-up email tomorrow just to make everybody aware of it. I think that's something the board should consider discussing as well.
Yeah, I'd say that having been through only one forty B, it was a long process. It's different than our normal special permit process or variance process. And our role is a little different. So I think it's a great idea for training from, and I would encourage that we do that. If, you know, we should do that on, if we have to, we can do it on a regular Thursday, Thursday meeting. But I would also that's, I think we have an awful lot of things and project applications coming up before us in the near future. And we may not want to be taking up meeting time, Thursday, Thursday night meeting time with a training session. So I would suggest that maybe we should survey the members to see what other, either evening, probably evening, we could do some of that training on and not take up a Thursday night. And I know it'd have to be a public, it'd be a public meeting still. We'd have to notice it and all that, but it would still be, it would, would make sense not to use up one of our Thursday nights, I think, if we could do that, Rob.
Sounds good.
Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I would just note that there's like, well, certainly possible there'll be turnover of this board at the end of June. May want to wait to have the new folks or, you know, maybe everyone's re-upping. We don't know, but just something to consider. I think some terms are pending. I know all
I have found.
All the associates are, are just one year terms. So.
I have, I have found that your term is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris or Rob, but I think your term goes until a replacement is found. Is that correct? Are the associate, are the associate members, the alternate member still a member until a replacement is found? Or does their term end on June thirtieth?
It depends on the interpretation. When this happens, we usually reach back to KP Law and ask them what is their recommendation, but it also relates to how the town council feels. And so we'll have to investigate that. The last time I went through this, the decision was made that when your term ends, your term ends, and that's the end of it. In the past, though, I've experienced people continuing on with certain cases, as long as they're on the panel and they're allowed to continue. So we'll have to get back to you on that topic.
Yep. Good point. Okay, Mr. Maxfield?
I was just gonna say, I, it looks like I'm going to be starting a new job next week that will involve evenings. So I, at this time, it, it, it looks like So I, at this time, it, it, it looks like this, this may be, I might be joining in with the turnover, unfortunately, and not doing a second term. It's all still in the works right now. If I can, if I can swing it, I, I, I would love to join you guys for one more, especially, you know, not leave you as the, the only, one of the only members on here who's done forty-B in the past, but we'll see as it currently stands, it's, it's, it's looking like I, I may be departing in, in June.
Well, I hate to hear that, Dylan. But I'm happy, it must be a good job. And I'm happy if that's the case. If you've got something that you want to do, that's a, that's a, that makes me feel good about it. That's more important. But especially this last, I thought you did a great job chairing this last meeting. I, I noticed, I saw part of it. You did a good job and, and I've enjoyed you being part of this board. But it's.
Nothing's, nothing's.
For us, we'd love it.
Nothing's official yet. And once I, once I truly know all, it might be able to, you can do our, our proper goodbyes then. So thinking about it, that's well, the direction it's heading, it looks like, but it's wait, maybe until it's official.
Uh, yeah, we don't want to jinx it. Okay. Yeah. Alright. Okay, anybody else have any old, any other business that, any old business scheduling? Anything else we need to go over? Good enough. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
One last comment before we go. I just wanted to point it out. I do appreciate the, we've got the, the Mustachioed Crew here tonight on the board. We're taking over the maturity map. So gotta, gotta enjoy it while we have it.
Yeah, and, yeah, while it's still the same color as your hair, too. That's nice. Alright, anybody else? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? I hear a second. The motion is not debatable and requires a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
And Mr. Slobodar?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys. And we got seven minutes before nine.
Good timing.